Good morning, this is the New York City Water Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for March 25, 2014. We'll begin with the special order calendar, decision items. Item number one, 92377BZ, 1905 McDonald Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Eric Palatnik, on behalf of Rothkrug, Rothkrug Inspector.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number two, 107084BZ, 234 East 58th Street, Manhattan. The Office of Frederick Becker.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Frederick A. Becker.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number three, 79989BZ, 14601470, Bruckner Boulevard, DeBronck.
Morning, Jay Goldstein for the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number four, calendar number 28701BZ, 2523 through 2525 Broadway, Manhattan. Officer Frederick A. Becker.
Good morning again, Madam Chair, Commissioner is Frederick A. Becker.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number five, calendar number 20102BZ, 6778 Highland Boulevard, Staten Island. Eric Palatnik.
Good morning again, Eric Palatnik.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Continued hearings, item number six, calendar number 823-19BZ, 1901, 10th Avenue, Brooklyn. Eric Palatnik.
Is this case Eric?
Hello, good morning, Eric Palatnik. We attended your review session yesterday, and we know your board is still looking for some additional items, so in the overnight hours, the architect, who unfortunately is ill and has gout, so he's unable to walk, he'd like to be here, he'll be at the next hearing if there is one, but nonetheless, he prepared this plan for us, which revises the layout of the parking area down at the first floor, you could see on the plot plan, and what it, the way it accomplished separating the two uses, by putting the warehouse loading on the one side, and the way it accomplished that was by removing the office that you see in the top right-hand corners, labeled as office number one, that was previously in the lower right-hand corner, which are labeled parking spaces six and seven. So, he, by reconfiguring things, he was able to achieve both the required parking and comply with the previous resolution's requirement of an off-street loading berth. He has assured me over and over again that there, I apologize when I get you the letter, that their, the building's engineering can sustain the additional floors, and that the column spacing won't be in the way. He hasn't given you, me, an engineer's letter yet, because they're selecting an engineer for the project right now. We will get that for you for your next hearing, and I do apologize if I wasn't here in this submission for your board. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, I mean, that could also be taken care of at the Buildings Department, when you show the azov right enlargement on top, you'll have to show that it's
Of course.
That it's structurally sound. If there are issues with the parking, the parking, again, is really driven by the community facility use.
Correct.
Do you have any concerns with that, Commissioner Montanez?
No, the only, I just wanted to clarify, previously you had given us some plans that included columns.
Yes.
And then you removed the columns
Yes.
From the plans, but my only concern was that if there are columns there that would interfere with this parking plan, that they'd be shown.
I, what I can do for you in the next submission is give you some more assurances, perhaps from the architect, and you can condition in your resolution as well, that there will not, there'll be clear span in the parking garage, and that there will be no columns spaced in the
I don't have an issue if you have to put columns, I think the concern is really that if columns are necessary to make the building structurally sound, you should put it in. I don't think we necessarily want you to build a more expensive building with beams across. I think the concern is only that the parking that's generated by the azov right use should be properly accommodated, but since these are all a part of the azov right part of the project, perhaps that should be looked at by the Buildings Department. Our concern is really that the space that is being used for the variance use functions appropriately, and I think the drawings show that. So, we can alert them to that. But ultimately, I think the Buildings Department should probably look at that. It seems reasonable?
Okay, as long as the parking works.
As long as the parking works. If it doesn't work, then obviously they would require them to modify their plans accordingly. Yes, Vice Chair?
On the drawing that you just gave us, we have the entrance to parking, and then an entrance to warehouse. They both appear to be quite small. Are those dimensioned? Can you tell us what those, the size of those openings are?
You're talking about the doorway on the right side?
Yes.
The two doorways. I'll get a dimension for you on the next submission.
All right, and also, at both of those entrances, are there curb cuts on the street? Are they, are there curb cuts in existence now?
I apologize, we didn't give you a plot plan with this to show you that, so, and I will find out for you if, I don't believe there are curb cuts. I will find out. I don't want to misspeak. I will find out.
Well, it's functioning as a warehouse, and it has loading and unloading that comes on now.
Right, I know.
It would seem to me that
That there is a curb cut. I'm going to look at the existing conditions plans while we're talking right now, just to confirm with you.
And while you're looking at that, would you let us know whether the Department of Transportation has opined on the, on the curb cuts for the street?
I'd be happy to. I'm looking at the existing conditions plan, just to answer your question. There is one, appears to be, although it's not labeled as such, but it is marked as such on the plan sheet.
From the photograph?
A1, there is one, at the lower bottom corner, closest to the corner, on the 10th Avenue side. There is not one on the top of the property, on the top of the plan sheet. But I'll get to mention for you, and I'll show those on, and the DOT request was of the curb cut, correct? Was that?
Well, it's, I think the curb cuts have to be approved by the Buildings Department. If it needs to go to DOT, then it'll go to DOT.
Fine.
I'm not sure the DOT reviews all curb cuts.
I don't believe they do.
Okay. But there's no zoning issue by providing two curb cuts, is there?
No, there isn't. The only potential zoning issue there could have been is for the curb cut that's closest to the intersection.
But if that's
But that's an existing one that's grandfathered in place, so I don't think there would be any problem with the second one, but I will
Just let us know that they're legit.
I'll have the architect address it, and we'll include it in our submission.
Thank you.
All right, were there other questions? Okay, I just had an issue regarding the roof plan, where you showed the bulkhead. If you look at your plan right now, where you show the footprint of the community facility at the roof level, it shows a bulkhead, it doesn't correspond with the bulkheads at the lower level, so if you'd
We'll fix that.
Can you take a look at that? Are there any other questions? Any speakers on this item? All right, why don't you respond to us fairly quickly, maybe in a week, and we can bring you back on April 8?
Okay, I was wondering if the board was happy with everything being closed, if you were unhappy, if we could reopen again, as most of it is
Well, why don't we see what we get on April 8?
We'd be happy to.
Okay, so if you can submit on April 1st, we can continue the hearing on April 8.
Thank you.
Item number seven, calendar number 42770BZ, 3801 and 3805, Beach Channel Drive, Queens. Carly Safari?
Good morning, Carly Safari, applicant. You should have my letter requesting a adjournment in this hour.
Yes, you said you wanted to submit on May 13?
Yes, sir.
All right, you can submit on May 13, and we can have the hearing on May 20.
May 20, thank you.
Item number eight, calendar number 54682BZ, 14815, 89th Avenue, Queens, Ackerman Center Fit.
Good morning, Madam Chairperson, Steve Sinekori, Ackerman Center Fit. We attended the board's executive session yesterday, and we understand the board would like to propose a condition for the resolution as it relates to the barbed wire. We don't have any issue with that.
Okay, good. Are there any other questions? Any speakers on this item? No speakers, we can close the hearing.
Chair Shunivassen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary Brown?
Aye.
Decide this case on April 8.
Thank you.
Item number nine, calendar number 17899BZ, 8973 through 95, Bay Parkway, Brooklyn. Eric Palatnik.
Barbara Hare for the applicant. All right, I was at the review session, so you want clearances shown on the parking plan? Clearances for the truck turn?
Yes.
Is that correct? That is correct. If you could just mention that detail that you gave us of the parking loading area. And the response to DOT, comments was delayed by weather. The final count was done last Saturday, so we should have a report ready in two weeks. Okay. And Mr. Freeman is here to answer your questions on the financials. All right, thank you.
Good morning, I'm Jack Freeman here, on behalf of the applicant. I wasn't at the review session to hear the questions, but as I understand them, there were two questions. First, related to adjustments we made in the comparables. We removed the lowest comparable. When we had initially done the study, it was our assumption the underwater portions of the land were included in the analysis of property value, and on that basis, to reflect that, we used a significantly low comp. After the last hearing, we went back and reviewed the comps, we used only upland comps. The low comp was less than half of any of the other upland comps that we looked at, so we substituted an upland comp that was in the range, and we think that the comparables that we used, not including the underwater portions, is appropriate for the site.
But the lowest comp, which you removed, was not for, that was for an upland site, correct?
When we did the original analysis, we included the low comp to basically reflect the fact that a portion of the site was underwater.
But that's not my question. My question is, was it the lowest comp still just for upland? It was an upland site, it wasn't an upland
It was more than 50% lower than any of the other comparables.
Right.
We thought it was outside of the range of reasonableness to use the comp that was that low, when we looked at and revised the comps. All of the other comps that we now included are within the same range, and we think that they're reasonable comps for the upland portions.
But it was an upland comp.
It was, but we used the low one, as I said, because we had a site that had some upland and some underwater portion, although it was primarily upland, and we felt that at the time this lowered the value of the property, or it was a greater amount of property. When we stepped back and looked at it after the last hearing, we felt that that was not an appropriate comp, because it was so low, and we selected another comp that was well within the range of all the other comps. We think it's not appropriate to take an outlier comp when we change the parameters of the comparable study.
All right, it just seems to me that this is the first we are hearing of that choice of comp, and
We can explain it.
I just didn't understand.
In the first report, you didn't state that you chose that low comp because you were trying to
You're correct.
For the underwater
I can add to the narrative as to why we selected these comps.
Well, it's just, you can understand why it's troubling for us.
I can understand.
Right? We saw a site value which included a larger site, we had asked you to adjust it, and then we see the same site value, in fact, slightly higher than it was the first time, and it just, there's a lot of things maybe that are going on your head that are not really articulated to us.
I can see if I can articulate it better.
Well, I think you've tried to explain it a little bit now, but
I mean, if you'd like, I can provide a response in writing that basically reflects what I just said. But as I mentioned at the last hearing, when we began the study, this was looked at by us as keeping to the parameters of the original grant of the variance, and this was an SOC case. It's shifted more in the direction of a VZ-type of case, so we did respond by taking, removing the underwater portions, and we then reviewed the comps, and we just did not feel that that low comp in this context was appropriate. I'll be glad to address
I mean, I think it's important to make your response a part of the record, because otherwise, it really does look like you're just backing into a number, and you're just cherry-picking comps
I will do that.
So that you serve that bottom line.
I will do that. I'll be glad to do that. And then I think the second question was regarding the second floor of the retail. That was valued, the lower floor was valued at $30 a foot, the second floor was valued at $20 a foot, and
But I don't think it's included in your
It was.
But then if you, if you look at the total square footage that you're going to be using for retail, it doesn't include, I don't think it, I think I went through the calculations, I don't think it was included.
I will support what I've just said, but we did, the analysis did include $20 a foot for the second floor space. It included the construction cost for the second floor space. It valued the first floor space at $30 a foot.
All right, but I'm going to, I need to point this out here, I'm looking at your sheet, and we're talking about Building C, correct?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. So, the two-story azov right retail development shows 16,000 square feet, and the proposed amended development shows 34,000 square feet. The whole idea was to make the two comparable in terms of size.
There may have been something that didn't carry over in the statement of what the areas were, but when we went back and looked at the analysis, we did
I'm just looking at this analysis, and I don't understand why you're saying
Yeah.
It's correct. It seems to have missed
We looked at it after the hearing yesterday.
I understand.
I think the statement of the area may be incorrect, but the calculation calculates the $30 and the $20 a foot for the total area, and I will just verify that for the record, and correct the error if it was just a translational error.
All right, and can you also look at the previous analysis that you provided us? Because I think in that case, instead of 16,000 square feet, which is one floor, it was 7,500 square feet, so if you can just look at
I will do that.
Both of those again? Thank you. All right, any other
I think those were the two questions.
I think we'll wait for your response.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Any speakers on this item? All right, we can continue the hearing. How much time do you need? Two weeks for the DOT response. All right, so if you can submit to us on the 15th of April, we can continue the hearing on April 29. Thank you.
Item number 10, calendar number 24601BZ, 3511, Prince Street, Queens. Eric Palatnik.
Hello, good morning again, Madam Chair and members of the board, Eric Palatnik. We attended your review session yesterday. The signage that's on 35th, the zoning analysis form is being updated now to reflect that.
And it's shown as a separate frontage?
Yes.
Because it doesn't have to be consolidated with?
Correct, it's a separate frontage.
And it does comply, correct?
Yes, it's all compliant.
Okay, because I didn't think it was a lot of signage. Any questions? All right, if, any questions? No. All right, if you can just, on your site plan, also clearly show the zoning lot itself, and that there's an entrance into the parking.
Sure, and then there's an entrance, excuse me, I didn't hear that.
The entrance to the parking, which is
On 35th?
On 35th Street, next to the building itself, and it's just a little bit unclear. So, if you can just show that clearly.
We shall.
Are there any speakers on this item? All right, if there are no speakers, we can close the hearing. We'll leave the record open for you to make the submission.
Thank you.
And submit to us on April 15. We can vote this out on April 29.
If it would all be possible, could we submit quicker? They're under a lot of financial pressure on the property, and we
But aren't they already functioning right now?
They're functioning in a portion of the property right now, but they're not functioning on the whole piece.
All right, if you can submit to us on April 1, we can vote this out on April 8.
Thank you.
Motion to close.
Chair Shunivassen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
New cases, item number 11, calendar number 11668BZ, and 96067BZ, 36 and 40 Central Park South, Manhattan, Ackerman Center Fit.
Good morning again, Madam Chair and Commissioners, Steve Sinekori, Ackerman LLP, here on behalf of the owner of 40 Central Park South. I'm joined by the owner, Damon Hemmerdinger, and as well as my co-counsel, Michael Silliman from Kramer Levin. I understand that the board had some questions regarding the development going forward, and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Silliman to address those, as he represents the owner of 36 Central Park South.
Okay. Mr. Silliman?
Is that so? Jesus.
Pardon me, it's such a standing-room crowd here today, probably because of the cameras. Michael Silliman from Kramer Levin, for Symphony CP Park Lane, owner LLC, that we're the owners of the Lot 11, which would be the transferee of the unused development rights from Lot 40, if your board approves this modification. There were questions that were raised yesterday at review session about the development scenarios that are likely to occur here, number one, and number two, to clarify the source of the unused development rights, where from a zoning point of view they come from. We've submitted a letter to the board to that effect, and I don't know whether the commissioners are in receipt of that, and whether you would like me to go through that.
I think it's fine, I just think that there may be an error here, because you noted that it says 14,000 square feet can be used on an azov right basis, but I think you may have meant 4,000 square feet.
You know, I, I think that there, there is a discrepancy between the floor area calculations and the original application, and in the table that we submitted, and in the table that we submitted is, is correct, that there are 55,469 unused development rights on Lot 6, because there's 307,000 totally available, 251 used, that's how you get the 55. To get to that, you'd have to increase the, the basic maximum floor area ratio of 10 in the R10H and C51 portion by building inclusionary housing, and that generates two times the lot area in those 10 FAR districts. So, that's 41,172. So, if you take 41,172 from the 55, it is 14.
Remaining is 14. Okay, all right, that's, that's complying. Okay. Are there any questions? Clarify it for me. Any speakers on this item? All right, there are no speakers. I think we can close the hearing. I think it would be helpful if you could, on your drawing, so perhaps note the amount of square footage that's being generated by inclusionary housing. I think the way it's written right now just gives a total number.
Right.
Okay, if you can just modify that. And I have some comments on the notes as well, and I think it'd be helpful if you speak with our counsel, just clarifying those notes.
Okay, I mean, we, we did add that note in, we intended it to be clear and restrictive, to make it, to make it clear that if, if the zoning lot merger occurs, that no use of the development rights can occur until the board is satisfied that the variance is surrendered, and the building is demolished to the extent of being a complying building. That was our first crack at the notes, and we're happy to clarify it in any way that counsel and staff wants us to do.
Right, I think there, it seems like there are two scenarios. One is if you demolish the building and rebuild under the zoning and use the air rights, and therefore you're surrendering the grant. And the second is if you modify the building, but essentially comply with the zoning, but you'd still be surrendering the grant in that event as well, I believe.
Well, I think, I think there is a theoretical scenario where you could keep the existing building in place.
Okay.
Modify it to comply with residential bulk regulations, and instead of using 12 FAR based on the Lot 6 lot area, also having an additional amount based, based on the Lot 11, in other words, the park lane, also 12 FAR times the, times the unused bulk, the 55,000 in that, so that, so that you're in effect retiring the development rights, you're not increasing the, the floor area ratio. The, the existing building has 370,000 square feet, and in the scenario that was discussed with the board before there was a zoning lot merger, you indicated that the existing building could be converted to 12 times its, its lot area if you shaved it back to make it complying in its shape for residential use. There is an additional scenario where you could convert another 55,000 now that we've merged the two.
All right, I don't think, why don't we do this? Let's keep the note really simple.
Right.
Because I don't think the board is ready to make any decision about a scenario that seems rather complicated.
Right.
And, so why don't we, why don't you work with our counsel, and we'll just simplify it? I think it's clear that if, if you do not need the variance at all, you can proceed. If you're retaining some portions of the variance building, including potential parts of the building, the portion of it may still be hotel use, portion of it may still have waivers associated with it, then you'd have to come back to the board. I think the idea of explaining another scenario, if you're surrendering the grant, that should be enough.
Yes, yes.
So, you don't need the second
Yes.
Because that's a complicated scenario, that we're not even sure what it really means right now. So, just work with John on that.
Yes, and we've indicated that the most likely scenario is, is the demolish and surrender.
Okay. All right. If there are no other questions, we can close the hearing. If you can revise your drawing and submit that to us on April 1, we can vote this out on April 8.
Thank you.
Motion to close.
Chair Shunivassen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 12, calendar number 18696BZ, 14521 through 25, Liberty Avenue, Queens. Rothkrug Rothkrug Inspector?
Hello, good morning, Eric Palatnik, on behalf of Rothkrug Rothkrug Inspector. We attended your review session yesterday, and we know your board had a couple of questions.
Yes.
I think one of them pertained to the use group that's at the corner of the property right now. There's a church office that's there, they don't actually hold services. It is a community facility use, but Mr. Rothkrug has requested that they be able to maintain or somehow keep the use group six designation, the commercial designation your board had previously granted for the building. They don't mean we were able to get a tenant there, but we don't in any way, shape, or form desire to restrict the potential when they would leave for another commercial use to come in.
Okay.
If that's acceptable to your board? I guess it is. The next question was
We'll take that under consideration. We understand you want
Usually Madam Chair has more, more questions for us, that's all. The length of the term was another question the board had. I believe the Roth, Rothkrug Rothkrug Inspector requested that no term be placed on it, and I know the board is not comfortable with that. We're requesting, if possible, if it could be a 15-year term that could be placed on it. Again, just coming back is expensive and time-consuming, of course, so
It seems that 10 years would be more appropriate. I can understand five years being too short, that was the previous one, but I think 10 years seems reasonable, it's applied all the time.
Also, it wasn't that expensive, because they didn't come back for 10 years.
Correct, and the earlier one didn't, the earlier one didn't
They incurred no expense.
And the last one, I understand that, but going through the process in general, and amending a certificate of occupancy, but I understand, Vice Chair. And Mr. Rothkrug wanted me to let you know that they are amending the signed calculations so that they're correct. I know the board had that question.
All right, Commissioner Hinkson, I know you're
Yes, I had a question yesterday. I think it's, the COs for Lot 20 and 24 have a limitation on the use group 16 uses that you can put into those spaces, so my question is, is that, are you requesting any modification of that, or are you satisfied with what's, what's on those CO? And also, can you explain how the current uses fall into the categories that appear on the CO?
I'd be happy to have them attend to that.
Are there any other questions? Any speakers on this item? No speakers, or we'll continue the hearing. If you can submit on April 15, we can have the hearing on April 29.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number 13, 19705BC, 813-815 Broadway, Manhattan, the Law Offices of Marvin B. Mitzner.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Vice Chair Marvin Mitzner, the applicant. I believe at the executive session, the Board suggested that perhaps we need to file a waiver argument in this application, because the timeframe would speak to the original variance rather than the amended variance. And we're certainly willing to make that correction.
Okay. So if you can just revise your papers and submit to the Board?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Any speakers on this item? We can close the hearing then. Chair Shunivassen.
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown.
Aye.
If you can submit to us on April 15th, we can vote this out on April 29th.
Okay, thank you very much.
Item number 14, 36905BC, 908 Clover Road, Staten Island, the Office of Eric Palatnik.
Good morning again, Eric Palatnik. We attended your review session yesterday, and I know the Board had a question about the fence, and the fence has already been repaired. It was repaired about a week ago. There was an ECB violation that was issued to the property for it, and they had corrected it. We'll submit photographs to your Board demonstrating that it's been corrected.
Okay. Commissioner Hinkson?
Yeah, I suggested that perhaps you ask for a little more time. You indicate that you don't have financing yet, and in your schedule of sort of, you know, how much time it's going to take for you to complete the building, you failed to kind of factor that in. So you've asked for three years, and I'm wondering if you need more.
More time would never hurt, so if the Board would be willing to give it, we'll put it in writing, but we are fairly close. It should be sufficient time, but we'll ask.
Were you asking for three years from the point of its expiration, which is in October, or three years from right now?
From expiration, we were asking for. But I thank you for...
Almost four years. Okay. It wasn't clear.
I thank you very much for calling that out and noticing that.
All right, Commissioner Montanez, did you have any other questions?
No, just regarding the fencing.
Okay.
The panel was missing also that it was leaning, but you say it's been repaired.
It's all been repaired, and we'll submit photographs to you showing you that. And I know that you live on the island, if you wanted to drive by and look it out.
I have, already.
I figured as much.
Okay. Any speakers on this item? Okay, no speakers. If you can submit the photographs to us in a week?
Yes.
We can vote this out on April 8th. So that's April 1st, and decision on April 8th.
Thank you.
Chair Shunivassen.
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown.
Aye.
Thank you.
Appeals calendar, decision items, item number 15, 9813BA, 107 Haven Avenue, Staten Island.
Good morning again, Eric Palatnik.
Motion to ground. Chair Shunivassen.
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number six, continued hearing, item number 16, 8011A through 84, 8511A and 10311A, East 9th Street, Manhattan.
Morning, Madam Chair. Vice Chair Marvin Mitzner, the applicant. In our most recent submission, we presented a revised objection sheet, which raises one single objection to the application, which is MDL 211. MDL 211 prohibits the enlargement of a tenement building above five stories, and so we're asking for that one waiver to allow this building to be enlarged from five to six stories. In the context of doing that, this Board needs to, we need to present to this Board an argument on practical difficulty as to why we cannot comply with the other section of 211, which says that if we want to increase the height above five stories, we need to comply with the Article 5 provisions. We want this Board to waive that provision, because complying with Article 5 creates a practical difficulty. And we've presented to the Board details as to why complying fully with Article 5 does present a practical difficulty, and that's the basis of our application.
Right. We understand that's the basis. I think we raised concerns about it. This is an amendment to the previous application. The previous application did not waive Section 211. It waived separate and individual MDL waivers, and I think, you may have raised this issue the last time around, but I think we have some concerns about the approach that you're taking. First of all, 211 says you're not allowed to enlarge. That's it. There's no practical difficulty. Everybody, you know, your building is of a certain size, certain age, a tenement, you're not allowed to enlarge. However, if you want to enlarge, then you have to comply with the regulations. So in other applications that have come before us, where tenements have increased their height, the intent is that they comply with all the MDL regulations, except for the ones that they've come to or waiver to the Board. And those are the ones that we look at under Section 310. That is how we advised you last time, and I think that's the way you should approach this application at this point. What it means is that there are certain regulations that don't fall within what the Board has the jurisdiction to waive, and you should think about looking at those objections and try and cure them at the Buildings Department.
But we're not asking for a waiver of those provisions. We're asking for a waiver of 211. 211 says that if we choose to enlarge it above five stories, actually, 211 says that we can enlarge it to any height if we comply with the light provisions applicable to non- tenement buildings. And what we're saying is, for us to do that is a practical difficulty. It's a practical difficulty under 211, and we've explained why it's a practical difficulty. And I think that's all the Board has to waive in order to grant us a 310 approval, because that's what 310 says. 310 says if we want to, that the Board can waive or vary any provision that relates to height and bulk, and 211 is certainly a provision that relates to height and bulk. If I were going to enlarge this building from four to five stories, I'd be within Article 7. I wouldn't have to go outside of Article 7. Article 5 would not be applicable, and I could do that without any waivers. But I am still a tenement building that only gets to Article 5 by virtue of 211. So if the Board waives 211, there's no need for me to go to Article 5, and that's the waiver I'm asking.
I don't think the Board would be able to make any finding about substantial justice being done and the spirit of the law being maintained just on the basis of waiving 211. And I think there's a reason that the drafters of the multiple dwelling law identified certain sections of the multiple dwelling law that could be waived. It did not say that the Board has the jurisdiction to waive any of the regulations. It was specific, and in both Section 310, I think it's 2A and 310, Section 2C, they have identified certain types of regulations that may be waived. So I think your approach, in my mind, calls into question, and at least conflicts, with that intent. I think in every other multiple dwelling law waiver that's come before us, we have approached this in the same way we're asking you to approach it now. The amendment, the previous resolution and application was based on individual sections, not on Section 211, and that should be the approach. You've also noted to us that you have cured some of these. There are certain sections that relate to, I believe, light and air, that may be not under the Board's jurisdiction, and also the Housing Maintenance Code. In your, I think in your description to us, you have, in fact, addressed those waivers at the Buildings Department, so you may not actually require those waivers. Is there anything outstanding still?
I'm not certain at this point, because it hasn't been backed.
Okay, because I think your papers noted that. You said you revised the MDL, the drawings before the Buildings Department. We asked you to submit that to us, and it hasn't been submitted. So we think that you should go back and look at those sections again and try and resolve them at the Buildings Department. Okay?
Well, we're more than happy to go back to the Buildings Department to resolve them, but there are two issues that I think, at this point, we need to address. And one is, you suggested that in our original application, we did not raise this argument, or 211 was not in consideration. If the Board is suggesting we file a new application, we can certainly do that, if that's what's required. In terms of how 310 is applied and how 310 relates to tenements, I dare say that if we are to go outside the ambit of Article 7 for tenements, which we're not required to do under any other circumstances, then the whole point of 310, I think, is undercut relating to tenements, and that really undercuts the MDL. The purpose of this provision of the MDL was a safety valve, to allow buildings, particularly tenement buildings, which are more fragile than perhaps other buildings covered by the MDL, to allow them to make certain changes and protect the tenants of those buildings by improving and enhancing fire safety features. That's what we've done in this case. That is the essence of this waiver provision of the MDL. Otherwise, you've got a situation where you've got buildings that have nowhere to go but to fall down, to fall apart, or be fire traps forever. That's the point of 310. Give us a safety valve, allow the Board to waive provisions, and in return, meet the spirit and intent of the MDL, provide for health, safety, and welfare by imposing or suggesting fire safety features. And that's what we've done here. The only provision...
But the issues are not about fire safety. The areas that we're asking you to look at, that you want us to waive, is not about fire safety. It's about light and air. We don't know how that's compensated in any way, so even...
To the extent, to the extent that...
The idea that just somehow waiving Article 3, I think, and you said it, Article 5, is that correct?
Article 5.
Article 5. As a blanket waiver, I think it would be very hard for this Board to come to that conclusion.
Well, we're not asking to waive Article... What we're looking at Article 5 for is the finding of practical difficulty, which is appropriate. I think it's not just a blanket waiver. The Board can waive Section 211, allowing us to increase the height of this building by one story, without having to now convert this building to an Article 5 building, because that conversion creates a practical difficulty. And analyzing that practical difficulty, the Board can look at each of the discrete aspects of Article 5 that we can't meet or have a practical difficulty in meeting. And the Board can determine whether, in fact, we do have a practical difficulty or not, to determine how the Board wants to treat that before they'll grant the waiver. But the waiver still applies to height and bulk under 211. The way in which this Board grants that waiver is what the balance of 310 talks about, which is spirit and intent of the MDL, health, safety, and welfare, and substantial justice. Practical difficulty. We still have to meet that, but we meet it in the context of 211. And once we've met that standard, then this Board can waive 211.
I'm not persuaded. Commissioner Hinkson, I know you had some questions on some of the other individual...
I did, and just sort of in general, in answering the question of how you have complied with our grant and how that makes the case for you for additional waivers. I think, for me at least, I need you to be more specific. Merely a statement that it's infeasible or impractical to comply with a particular section, you know, is a little sort of overbroad. I think I'm looking for the specifics. If you want me to waive a particular section or to say that you have indeed met your burden on that section, you're going to have to tell me exactly how you did that and how you have complied with our previous grant and how that, carrying forward for your additional waiver, ties in. So I did not see that in your papers, although I know you revised them and perhaps added additional sentence here or there, but it really didn't cover, for me at least, what sort of the crux of your requests are. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, I thought...
I think what you're saying is for each individual section, which is, let's say, MDL 148, you're waiving one all the way to seven, identify each one of the requirements and then explain why you can't meet them. And I think you've done it for a couple of them, but not all of them, so...
Well, I'll take a closer look at that and see if we can expand that.
You can submit your papers again and argue that point. We will take a look at it. But I would also ask you to take an alternative approach, which is that there are a couple of sections that may not, in our opinion, are not part of our jurisdiction. I think you should look to see if you can solve that. One of them is for Building 329. Is that correct?
Yes.
Right? And it's on the top floor, and I think you put a skylight, and it's on the top floor. I'm not sure why there should be an issue with light and air, but if you can, that should be resolved.
I don't think that's the issue. I think the real issue...
What's the issue?
The real issue is that the requirement of public hallways having windows is a requirement, I think, I forget which one it is, is one of the requirements that has been raised.
So it's not an issue of the depth of the rooms, is that correct?
The depth of the rooms, we can solve, I believe.
Okay, all right. So...
I think it's really, and we'll address, it's really the windows in the public halls, which is a means of egress. I mean, we can treat it that way, but we'll take a look at that again.
Okay. See if that's an issue of egress more than light and air, okay?
Okay.
All right. And if you've corrected some of the other objections and you have revised drawings, it would be helpful if you use that as your base for the drawings before us.
Yeah, the revisions, I think we supplied you with some revised drawings, which were based upon discussion with Buildings. It's really unrelated to the MDL, they're basically zoning issues involving the enlargement, and we had to modify the...
Right, no, I understand that you had cut it back and the dormers were dropped. I understand that.
Yes.
All right, because there were some notes on the set of drawings that we have, which identify objections to the room depth, and if you could just take out all that, if that's not before us, it shouldn't be identified.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Okay. There speakers on this item? Yes, please come forward.
Good morning, Chairs and Committee. I'm here on behalf of Councilmember Rosie Mendez. My name is Dara Quinsec. In the interest of time, the Councilmember would like to make sure that you understand that her point is mostly that zoning waivers should not supersede the safety of the community with MDL. So mostly, as you know from the submission that was provided beforehand, she wants to make sure that the committee, the Commission, doesn't trump the MDL based on the zoning waivers that were provided beforehand. That's the number-one concern that she has, and that's pretty much all that we want to say at this time, and most of the testimony and submissions in the letter. Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you, Chairwoman and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Karen Lowe, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Greenwich Village Society for Art Preservation, the largest membership organization in Greenwich Village, the East Village, and NOHO. GVSHP strongly opposes the requested waiver amendments to enlarge the buildings at 329 through 335, East 9th Street. Granting these amendments to permit construction of rooftop additions without full and clear compliance with the MDL and the New York City Building Code undermines the enforceability of those laws and would set a far-reaching precedent for owners of similar tenement buildings to do the same, like Councilmember Mendez, and it seems perhaps the Chairwoman and Commissioner Hinkson. We are of the conviction that the statute governing the Board's authority to waive or vary MDL provisions requires very narrow application to specific hardships, which are to be very clearly stated. Yet the owner is requesting a wholesale waiver of each and every MDL provision otherwise applicable, without proving how and why strict compliance cannot be achieved or the practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship that would be entailed. The owner argues that because difficulties would be imposed by strict compliance with at least some of the provisions that apply under the Second Clause, which would allow the additions. The Board should waive the prohibition itself contained in the First Clause. But strict compliance with the prohibition itself does not cost the owner anything. He can readily comply with a prohibition simply by foregoing the vertical enlargements altogether. After all, the zoning resolution does not guarantee an owner the right to erect new buildings or alter existing ones at the lowest possible cost, without regard to building code limitations. Tenements comparable to those at issue in these proceedings are located all over Manhattan, some in relatively low-density R6 districts, and others in very high-density R9 and R10 districts. Building code requirements are routinely applied and enforced regardless of the underlying zoning. Neither DOB nor this Board is known to waive such building code limitations on the argument that the underlying zoning would allow a taller or larger structure. If anything, enforcement of building code limitations takes precedence over zoning parameters. If zoning were to trump MDL requirements, this is not the case for it. Without a previous zoning lot merger by which development rights were transferred from the 329 lot to its neighbors, the zoning allows none of these tenements to be enlarged vertically, and only 329 East 9th itself and possibly 335 East 9th could be enlarged at all and only at the rear. Additionally, although the owner seems to be attempting to blame his present predicament on the DOB for having raised new... on the DOB for having raised new and additional MDL objections, it should be noted that it is not the job of the DOB or this board to educate a property owner about the building code, MDL, or zoning requirements governing proposed construction. It is the property owner's duty to do so. We urge the board to reject the owner's request for a blanket waiver of Chapters 3 and 5 of the MDL, and respectfully request that the board consider whether a waiver or variance should be granted with respect to each individual MDL provision as applicable to these four buildings. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? Any more speakers? All right, Mr. Mitzner?
Just a point of clarification, as you noted for the record. We're not asking for any zoning waivers. We've been at buildings, buildings have satisfied that we meet all the zoning requirements.
Okay. Can you submit to us on April 15?
Yes.
Then we can continue the hearing on April 29.
Very good, thank you very much.
Item number 17, calendar number 11013A, 120 President Street, Brooklyn, Abrams Bentstone.
The applicant has asked for an adjournment. We'll adjourn this case May 6.
May 6? Item number 18, calendar number 16413A, 307 West 79th Street, Manhattan, Slater and Beckerman.
Excuse me, good morning. Stuart Beckerman from the Law Office of Slater and Beckerman. We represent the appellant in this matter. We attended review session yesterday, where the board raised a couple of points. One is, the board expressed its view that it is not yet convinced that a appellant has met its burden of establishing that the weekly rental provision of Paragraph 16 applied to occupancy. And the board also said that if the weekly rental provision applied to occupancy, it should have stated so in the statute. We believe we've more than met our burden, and I'll go through that in a moment. Second, the board said that the evidence in the record does not establish sufficiently that since 1943, the units were not rented for periods of less than a week. And again, I just want to point out, in our view, that is not relevant, and I'll go through that in a moment, so-
You're right, in some ways it is not relevant, I would agree.
I know, but I understand it was raised yesterday.
Okay.
In summary, we believe we've created a strong record for granting the appeal, and I was a little surprised to hear that the board is not yet convinced, because I really feel we've made a very compelling case, and I believe the Buildings Department has yet really to provide any evidence at all that there's been any support anywhere in the legislative history or in the statute for its position. So briefly, the multiple dwelling law as written in 1960 and as reflected in legislative history from 1940, '39, supports the argument that rental and occupancy were meant always to be synonymous. And again, the Buildings Department has produced absolutely zero evidence to support its position, other than to talk about just the way it interprets the law, and honestly, I don't think they really were able to show anything going back further than a few decades, certainly not back to 1960 when the CVO was issued. And also, the right to rent and occupy for weekly periods, which is, again, we believe a right that is guaranteed by the certificate of occupancy, is an accrued right protected by the savings clause of the multiple dwelling law. So I'd like to just briefly address the two issues that were raised by the board yesterday, and I respectfully request that the record and the hearing be kept open for another submission and also another hearing, so all issues are adequately addressed. Okay, I'd first like to address the issue of whether a appellant has met its burden of establishing that the weekly rental provisions of Paragraph 16, former Paragraph 16 of Section 248, applied to occupancy. And again, we believe we've more than met our burden, and I'm not going to today go through all the evidence and the documentation that we have furnished the board, but I'd like to just make a few points, and these are points that I think we've reiterated in our most recent submission of March 11. So yes, it is true that Paragraph 16 did not specifically call out occupancy and say that rental meets occupancy. However, as we've documented, I believe repeatedly, and we've kept building on our documentation with each subsequent submission, that provisions in the statute that help us understand this particular provision, as well as the legislative history and general usage, leave room, in our view, for no other interpretation. The Buildings Department's argument that 30 days was always the law, even in 1939, or if they didn't say it was the law, they say it's always been their understanding of what the word permanent means or residence. Again, we've shown repeatedly that that is not what the legislature understood in 1939 and not what they understood in 1955, as I'll explain in a moment, when they made amendments to that particular section of the MDL. Again, and that the Buildings Department's saying that it would never have allowed, never would have allowed, Class A SROs to have weekly occupancy. It's just completely fabricated. In my view, I'm going to say this is my own opinion, but I really believe that it's just a transparent effort to retroactively legitimize policy that they've seen as the view over several decades. And I'm not going to speculate as to why this suddenly has become an issue, but I think, you know, probably changing market conditions, other factors, the tourism industry, whatever, but the fact of the matter is, the law is clear, it is crystal clear, and going back to the 1930s, as we pointed out with rental of units, it was contemplated that these units would be rented out to people visiting the World's Fair. I think we've pretty much made our case on that. Again, it shows that weekly occupancy was contemplated. In 1968, the building code was amended, and for occupancy under the building code, they, for the first time, specified 30 days. That's the first time 30 days, as we've been shown, has ever appeared in any law applicable to New York City. And as we know, and as I'm sure the board will readily, because I've seen, you know, in prior decisions where the board has said this, you can't use one law to interpret another law. So the fact that it was in the building code really has no relevance to its interpretation of the multiple dwelling law and Class A, because Class A is not in the building code, it's in the multiple dwelling law. And then in 2010, the law for the first time was amended. The multiple dwelling law was amended and 30-day occupancy was codified. That is the first time. And as you know, the issue here predates that. So again, to say that it has always been the law is without any merit at all. And as we stated in our March 11 submission, which was a response to the Buildings Department's March 4 submission, the fact that rental and occupancy are synonymous is supported by the section of the multiple dwelling law defining lodging house, which is the law still, and was the law in 1960 when the most recent CVO was issued, and it defined lodging house, which is a Class B multiple dwelling, so it's understood to be transient, as a multiple dwelling, quote, "in which persons are housed for a hire for a single night or for less than a week at one time, or any part of which is let for any person to sleep in for any term less than a week," unquote. This definition does two things. One, it says that persons housed in a Class B dwelling, quote, "hire," unquote, the room for periods of less than a week only. One may infer that hiring the room for a week or more causes the room to be something other than Class B. I mean, I can only speculate, it doesn't say it necessarily becomes Class A, but I'm just pointing out that it is no longer a Class B lodging house as defined in the zoning resolution. And this is a specific provision that talks about periods of occupancy. The second thing this definition does is, it clearly equates hiring, which is synonymous for renting, with sleeping, which is synonymous for occupying. And again, it shows that the legislature contemplated that these two should be seen as being in tandem. I mean, any other reading of the law, I believe, lacks common sense. Also, the Buildings Department's argument in its March 4 submission that, quote, "the more stringent fire safety requirements applicable to transient units," unquote, did not apply to Class A SRO units, and therefore, a 30-day minimum occupancy applied is also without any legal basis. And I think we clearly put that argument to rest in our March 11 submission, where we pointed out that in the historical and statutory notes in McKinney's, in support of an amendment in 1955 to the multiple dwelling law, which concerns specifically the fire safety requirements for Class A SROs, the Joint Legislative Committee on Housing and Multiple Dwelling stated the following, quote, "Since the use of buildings for SRO occupancy from a fire and safety standpoint places SRO buildings in substantially the same category as hotels and lodging houses, it seems only proper that the absolute minimum standard for fire protection provided in this bill should be required, as is now required for hotels and other similarly transiently occupied dwellings," unquote. So I think what the State Legislative Committee made clear, what they're saying is, is that fire and safety standards of the SRO law, that when they wrote the fire and safety standards for SRO multiple dwellings, Class A, they viewed them as, quote, "similarly transient," unquote, to Class B hotels and lodging houses. And that is a direct rebuke to the Buildings Department's statement that the more stringent fire safety requirements applicable to transient units did not apply to Class A SROs. I mean, I don't think it could be any clearer than that, that that was always understood to be the case. And I'm happy to hear Madam Chair point out that this issue isn't relevant, but since it was raised, I just want to point out that on the issue of whether the evidence in the record sufficiently establishes since 1943 the units were not rented for periods of less than a week, we've already submitted, you know, affidavits from the owner, from the internet hosting company, I mean, we can only go back so far, occupancy logs and newspaper advertisements, going back very far. We will continue to provide more documentation, just to show that we can meet that particular burden, even though I don't think it's relevant. And I don't think it's relevant for the following reason, and it's in our papers, I'll restate it, and I'm happy to hear that Madam Chair agrees, that the MDL in the 1960 CVO, I mean, I think, well, this I know you may not agree, but the MDL in the 1960 CVO allowed weekly occupancy. And even if the owner were to deviate from the weekly occupancy, the CVO controls. And if the CVO allowed weekly occupancy, that's all that matters, and if they deviated, then Buildings Department can bring an enforcement action saying, "You must comply with the CVO." It doesn't cause the CVO to no longer apply, and all the regulations and all the requirements of the CVO no longer to apply. You know, this is not, you know, I guess, one could argue, although I think it's not a reasonable argument, that if this were to apply, that it would apply only in 2010, when the law was changed, and only if the savings clause didn't apply, and obviously we believe it does. But even if that were the case, this is not the zoning resolution. There is no comparable provision in the multiple dwelling law to Section 5261. So we're not talking about a use suddenly becoming nonconforming and you suddenly lose your right. That's just not the case in the MDL, and I don't even think the Buildings Department has suggested that, but I just want to make that very clear for the record. So-
And I just also want to clarify about what I meant when I said it's not relevant. And I think if this case hinges on looking at the two sections of the MDL together, which is the section which talks about the rental versus the definition of an SRO as a Class A multiple dwelling, and one believes that occupancy is not a part of that section, I think you said 16, then I think it's not relevant. If your argument is that you are entitled to the savings clause, then it would be relevant.
Right. I appreciate that, thank you. So in conclusion, we respectfully request that the board favorably consider our appeal. We believe we've made, more than met our burden, in proving that we are entitled to the appeal. And again, the Department of Buildings, in my view, in our view, collective view, we work as a team, and I think we all are in agreement that the Buildings Department still, we keep, you know, every time we see a submission, you know, we think they're going to produce something, and they have yet to produce anything, in our view, that conclusively refutes any of our arguments. So I think I'll leave it at there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, we'll hear from the Buildings Department.
Good morning, Janine Gaylard for the Department of Buildings. I also attended the executive session, and I think that the board really distilled the appeal down to the key question, which is whether the MDL provision, which provided that no SRO room could be rented for less than a week, authorized weekly occupancy. And the department's position as the agency charged with interpreting the MDL in the first instance pursuant to the charter is no. The weekly provision merely goes to rental and not occupancy, as the board noted in its executive session. The MDL has several sections that clearly use the term occupancy, and if that was what was intended here, they certainly could have used the word occupancy and not rental. Also, it's clear to the department that weekly occupancy is not in any way consistent with Class A occupancy, which even in 1939 was distinguished from transient occupancy. If one were to agree that weekly occupancy was allowed, you would have to, it seems contrary to just the logical meaning of the term, that weekly would be a permanent type of occupancy. I think most would agree that the common sense definition of transient would be more of a weekly occupancy. So I think just in terms of the basic statutory interpretation, weekly can only mean transient. And another point in terms of the fire protection standards is that the SRO provisions that were brought in with MDL 248 were really to address the increase in density. So there were increased sanitary and safety protections introduced, but by no means were SROs afforded the same fire protection as hotels, with the most significant distinction being that there would be another means of egress required. And I'd just like to point out, for this particular building, it's 10 stories and a penthouse. You have 16 units on the first floor, you have 23 on the second to 10, another four on the penthouse. And while it's an existing legal condition to have one means of egress for this building, you certainly would not want to have that amount of density exiting only out of one means of egress. Again, the department feels that it's met its burden. We submitted legislative history that showed that the weekly rental went to the affordability of the housing. We don't feel that at any stretch of the imagination, weekly occupancy can be understood to be a permanent type of occupancy. People who have weekly turnover would not be considered permanent occupants of a building. And also, the quite clear distinction between hotel-type occupancy of fire protection standards also supports the fact that weekly occupancy would not have been allowed in this building. So to the extent that weekly occupancy was never allowed in this building, there's really no right lost to implicate the MDL savings clause. The department feels that it's met its burden, and it certainly is open to hearing any further questions, and would respectfully request that the appeal be denied and our determination be upheld.
Are there any questions for the Buildings Department? All right, I just have one question, and I may have noted it yesterday, which is that I think the MDL in 1939 noted that Class A multiple dwellings were for residence purposes, and then you had Class B for transient purposes, is that correct?
Correct.
And so that change, because you've used the word permanent, and in 1955, when the MDL was modified, they included additional language. One had to do with saying permanent residence purposes, I think, and then they added another, which was as a rule, I believe. Those were the two things they added in. I noted yesterday that, I felt there was nothing in the record, that the inclusion of the word permanent was intended to change the definition from 1945, sorry, 1955, to what it was in 1943, which yes, had residence purposes. And I just was curious whether the Buildings Department took any position on that.
No, I think the department would agree, because what was clear is that whatever type of occupancy Class A was, it was always distinguished from transient occupancy.
Okay.
So to some degree, maybe permanent was implied to the extent it was distinguished, and then it was put in later, but again, we- But again, I, we certainly, weekly seems more of a transient-type turnover.
Okay. And I just had one other comment, which perhaps you could submit to us in your next set of papers, if you're not able to speak to it today. And that had to do with the language of McKinney's notes, which has, is in the MDL or a portion of the MDL which was identified by the appellant. And if you could just speak to whether you feel there's any conflict in those words versus the intent of the MDL.
I'll be happy to submit on that.
Okay. Thank you. The speakers, any other questions for the Buildings Department? Are there any speakers on this item? Any speakers? Yes, please come forward. You'll be given three minutes.
My name is Paul Sawyer. I'm here to deliver testimony in behalf of Assemblymember Lynda B. Rosenthal. I am Assemblymember Lynda B. Rosenthal, and I represent the 67th Assembly District, which includes the Upper West Side and parts of Clinton Hill's kitchen in Manhattan. I am testifying today in regard to an appeal by Grand Imperial LLC to the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals regarding the Imperial Court Hotel located at 307 West 79th Street in my district in Manhattan. The appeal requests that BSA overturn a decision by the New York City Department of Buildings denying a request for a letter of no objection to allow occupancy on a weekly basis of Class A SRO, single-room occupancy units at the Imperial Court. As the Assemblymember representing the dozens of SRO tenants and neighbors of the Imperial Court and a member of the New York State Assembly Committee on Housing, I am extremely concerned that Grand Imperial and Michael Edelstein, one of its owners, are attempting to legalize a historically illegal operation on the premises. Since the Imperial Court is a Class A multiple dwelling, transient occupancy has never been legal there. Under City Charter Section 643, DOB is charged with interpreting the New York State multiple dwelling law in the first instance, and until a state law through which Grand Imperial is seeking to be grandfathered, was passed in 2010 clarifying a 30-day occupancy minimum for all Class A multiple dwellings. The MDL did not specify a minimum number of days for a dwelling to be occupied as a permanent residence. DOB has consistently interpreted permanent residence to mean occupancy of no less than 30 days, and so transient occupancy has never been legal in Class A SRO buildings like the Imperial Court. Even if Grand Imperial's cherry-picked arguments that the legislative history of the MDL were to be accepted by the board, weekly rentals to transients did not begin in 1960, as the appellant has claimed, nor were rentals always weekly or greater. As tenants have testified, transient rentals, including nightly rentals, began only in 2006, and I myself booked a two-night stay online in 2007. DOB violations corroborate tenants' claims. DOB has issued violations for illegal transient occupancy in 2006, '08, '09, '11, and '12, and the majority of the violations were issued before the passage of the state law that Mr. Edelstein claims should not apply to him. It is truly bizarre that Mr. Edelstein would argue that the transient occupancy in the Imperial Court should be grandfathered through the state law, when these violations and pre-existing MDL requirements clearly show that such use has long been illegal. Mr. Edelstein is trying to use his familiar argument that a prohibition on the seven-day rentals in the Imperial Court was an unintended consequence of the state law. As a co-sponsor of the state law and someone who fought strenuously for its passage, let me be clear that shutting down the illegal hotel run by Mr. Edelstein in a Class A SRO building was absolutely an intended consequence of the law. The law was enacted to facilitate enforcement of existing MDL occupancy requirements and to have illegal hotels return to permanent housing, so, as has already been done in other SRO-restricted buildings on the Upper West Side, such as the Tempo Hotel and the Hotel Riverside Studios. There is no shortage of tenants who would be happy to rent these former illegal hotel units. Indeed, the current tenants of the Imperial Court have remained in the building despite Grand Imperial's best and well-documented efforts to harass them into vacating their apartments. Grand Imperial has claimed to be losing money on the vacant units, yet its representative has acknowledged that it's only tried to market the units for 30-day hotel stays, school dormitories, and uses other than permanent rentals to tenants. At a time when the city's dwindling affordable housing stock has never been scarcer, the claim that Mr. Edelstein cannot utilize these units without BSA granting his appeal is absurd and insulting. Mr. Edelstein is trying, as he has always tried, to make a fast buck without any regard to the law, and his legal arguments show a willful blindness to the history of the MDL and his own use of the Imperial Court. The sooner the BSA's decision on this appeal is issued, the better. I urge BSA to deny this appeal and send a clear message to Mr. Edelstein and landlords like him that illegal hotels are not tolerated in Class A multiple dwellings in New York City. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? All right. Yes. May I? All right. I think, I would recommend that we close the hearing today. We can leave the record open for you to make a submission, for the Buildings Department to respond back, and for you to have the final set of papers. So if you, you said you wanted to gather some more information?
Yes.
If you could submit to us on April... Let me close my calendar. On April 8th?
I think we're going to need more time. We need to collect all the information, so if you can give us a month...
I think we're going to give you, we can give you one more week. So April 15th? Buildings Department can submit to us on April 29th. And, Mr. Beckman, you can respond back on May 6th, and we'll vote this out on May 20th. Make a motion to close.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Item number 19, calendar number 29613A, 280 Bond Street, Brooklyn, Jack Lester.
The applicant has asked for an adjournment, and a schedule was set, and we'll have the hearing on April 1st.
Item number 20, calendar numbers 307, 308, 13A, 98, and 100 Bell Street, Staten Island, Joseph M. Maurice.
Good morning. Joseph Maurice, architect for the owner. We attended yesterday's review session, and I understand there was a question or a mention of the proposed trees being indicated on our site plan. We didn't show any trees, three trees on the site plan, because we had it reviewed by parks, and they had approved off-site tree plantings, street tree planting. I have an approved letter.
That'd be great if you can give...
Site plan. Okay.
Commissioner Montanez?
No, that was my question, because you put the notes there.
Yes. I think it was on the paving plan, the note.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Any speakers on the site? We can close the hearing.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
And we'll set the decision for April 8th.
Thank you.
New case. Item number 21, calendar number 260607A, 1602 through 1610 Avenue S, Brooklyn, the Law Office of Frederick A. Becker.
Good morning. Lyra J. Altman from the Law Office of Frederick A. Becker. We did attend your executive session yesterday and heard your comments. I believe the first was regarding the financing. We do have a letter for your board from the investor stating that he is dedicated to this project, and will see this project to the completion.
You will be submitting a letter to us, is that correct?
We will be submitting it, yes. I do have it with me today as well. In addition, regarding the site prod, the site being cleaned up, I've already spoken with the client. He will make sure that is taken care of immediately. And lastly, I understand there were some questions regarding the violations. We had already submitted a list to your board of all the violations on the site, along with a summary of each of the violations. I wasn't sure what additional information your board would like.
Uh, where, how many are outstanding?
There are nine outstanding ECB violations. Eight of them are for the fence. One is for discontinuance of work, which is why we're here. And the DOB violations, there are six, but there isn't very good information on those, unfortunately, on biz. So I can only tell you the type of violations. I can't tell you details on those violations.
Right. And I think what we were hoping to get more explanation than what we could find out from biz.
I, I can find out if the client has any information.
Right.
These are old violations, as you know, but I will be glad to find out.
Okay. And the eight that were for the fence, has the fence been fixed?
It has, yes. I will speak to the client about trying to resolve those.
Okay. Commissioner Montanez, I know you had some concerns.
Not I.
Oh. Commissioner Hinkson?
I, mine was just about the debris on the site, and if you could give us some photographs once it's cleaned up, that would be great.
We'll be glad to.
Okay. I know there's one up violation, which is for zoning. What is that? And if you could just get back to us, it's in your list. If you could just explain.
If it's one of the DOB violations, I didn't have additional information, which is why I didn't provide it to your board, but I'll be glad to see if the client has any more information than what the Department of Buildings has.
That'd be great. Vice Chair, you, you had some comments yesterday about the...
Just about evidence of the financing, which the applicant said she will supply.
Okay.
Glad to.
All right. Very good. Are there any speakers on this item? Okay. How much time do you need?
Just to make sure my client has enough time to clean up the site and provide me photos, if we could have two weeks, I'd appreciate that.
Actually, why don't we give you three weeks? So April 15th, and we can continue the hearing on April 29th.
April 29th?
Yes.
Thank you.
Zoning calendar, decision items. Item number one, calendar number 6413BZ, 712 Avenue W, Brooklyn, the Law Office of Frederick A. Becker.
Good morning again. Lyra J. Altman from the Law Office of Frederick A. Becker.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number two, calendar number 7613BZ, 176 Oxford Street, Brooklyn, Eric Palatnik.
Hello. Good morning, Eric Palatnik.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number three, calendar numbers 92 and 93, 13BZ, 22 and 26, Lewiston Street, Staten Island, Rothberg, Rothberg Inspector.
Good morning, Eric Palatnik, on behalf of Rothberg, Rothberg Inspector.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number four, calendar number 15713BZ, 1368 and 1374 East 23rd Street, Brooklyn, Sheldon Lobel.
Good morning. Elizabeth Bennett from Sheldon Lobel, PC, for the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number five, calendar number 20713BZ, 177 Hastings Street, Brooklyn, Harold Weinberg.
Good morning. Frank Salito for Harold Weinberg.
All right. Why don't we reopen this case, because there have been a couple of adjournments, and we might as well get the issues out here. Make a motion to reopen.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Since we had closed the hearing, we had noted that there is an additional objection that was needed for the extension of noncompliant perimeter wall. And I think you noted to us that it's 25 feet. We understand you've got the objection, but you haven't really provided sufficient proof.
I'll clarify that right now.
Okay.
There was a CBO issued in 1992, I believe, under the biz system, that indicated 25 feet. When the new buildings were built, there were three identical buildings. This is the center building. The CBOs indicated 24 feet. Maybe it was a clerical error in 1992, it was the beginning of the biz system before there was e-filing and so on. I don't know. In any event, it was the intent from the start with this application, and we are the design applicant as well.
Right, right.
To maintain the existing perimeter wall height, and that is what we've done from the...
Right. And the three buildings actually were built together at the same perimeter wall. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. But you don't know what the height is, is that the problem? Because one CBO says 25?
We're keeping it at 24 feet, period.
Okay. So you're going to show it at 24, as the other two?
And again, it's the existing perimeter wall height has never changed from day one. Okay?
Does the board have any concerns about that?
No.
If, we, the board has seen the CFO for the two adjacent buildings at 24 feet. Okay. As long as we have in the record. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any speakers on this item? So, so you're going to revise your drawing to share 24 feet?
They're actually, they should be done by the time we get back to the office. I'll review them tomorrow and submit ASAP.
Okay, great. In that case, we can close the hearing, and if you can submit to us, submit to us on, by April 1st, we can vote this out on April 8th.
Thank you.
Motion to close.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Item number six, calendar number 28213BZ, 556 Columbia Street, Brooklyn, Flora Edwards.
Good morning, Flora Edwards, on behalf of the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number seven, calendar number 29313BZ, 7804 Conduit Avenue, Brooklyn, Slater and Beckman.
Ellen Hayes, Slater and Beckman.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Continued hearings. Item number eight, calendar number 6212BZ, 614, 618 Morris Avenue, the Bronx, Anchorman Centifit.
Good morning again, Madam Chair and Commissioner, Steve Sinacori from Anchorman Centifit.
All right. It seems that the board was satisfied with your submission. Are there any questions for the applicant?
No.
Are there no questions for the applicant? Are there any speakers on this item? Speakers? We can close the hearing.
Thank you.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
We'll set a decision date for April 8th.
Thank you very much.
Item number nine, calendar number 7712BZ, 91 Franklin Avenue, Brooklyn, Moshe M. Friedman.
Good morning. Moshe Friedman, for the applicant.
Any questions for the applicant? Any speakers on this item? Speakers? We can close the hearing.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
We'll decide this on April eighth.
Thank you very much.
Item number ten, calendar number two ninety-nine twelve BZ, forty through fifty-six Tenth Avenue, Manhattan, Goldman Harris.
This application has been adjourned, and we'll have the hearing on April eighth.
Item number eleven, calendar number one sixty dash thirteen BZ, eleven seventy-one through eleven seventy-five East Twenty-eighth Street, Brooklyn, the Office of Frederick A. Becker.
Good morning, Lyra J. Altman from the Office of Frederick A. Becker. Once again, we did attend your executive session yesterday and heard your comments regarding the parking on P one. If you actually were to take a ruler, I know it doesn't appear this way, but if you were to take a ruler across, you would see that the parking does start at exactly the fifteen foot mark.
I don't want to take a ruler, I want you to put dimension on the plan.
Want me to have a dimension? I will have a dimension. I will say, it is dimensioned on the drawing, it's just dimensioned on the bottom of the site, not on the top of the site.
Exactly, and I think you need to do it at the top of the site.
I will be glad to have the architect to add the dimension on top as well. And regarding the map, I know you said you wanted a better map for the larger sites. Interestingly, three of the five sites actually are on the radius diagram, and I'll be glad to hand that up to your board if you'd like.
Okay.
What you'll see if you look at the radius diagram, and it is identical to the radius diagram that we submitted with the initial application. Our site is right here.
Okay, well, it would have been helpful if you just identified the sites, but okay, we can see it. One is...
One is immediately below, on the corner of Twenty-eighth and L. One is behind, right here, on Twenty-ninth Street, and one is across the street on Twenty-eighth Street. All three sites are sixty by a hundred.
All of them are sixty feet, correct?
Excuse me?
They're all sixty feet?
Correct, they're all sixty feet by one hundred feet. There are, on our map that we had provided to your board previously, there were two additional sites. One of them was just one site off of this map right here, and the other was up here on the corner.
Okay, so, your site is sixty-six, so basically it's the largest site because these ones are not...
It is slightly larger, yes.
Okay. All right, any questions on that? We'll accept this map, then. Any speakers on this item? Any speakers? No speakers. Okay, we will close the hearing. We'll leave the record open for you to revise your drawing. I, I guess you can revise it in a week, so...
Absolutely.
That's April first, we vote this out on April twenty...
April twenty?
Sorry, April eighth, not twenty.
April eighth decision? And submission April one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chair Shunivassen? Aye. Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
Item number twelve, one seventy-seven dash thirteen BZ, one thirty-four Langham Street, Brooklyn, Law Office of Erica Palatnik.
Hello, good morning again, Erica Palatnik. We attended your review session yesterday, and we know the board had, uh, raised an issue regarding the flood regulations. Uh, we spoke with the project architect last night, who is of the opinion that it does comply with the flood regulations, and that he'll be submitting it to the Department of Buildings for their review. We could submit a letter from the architect if you'd like, that clarifies that for the board's records, if you would be more comfortable with that. But he, he believed it did, and I don't know the specifics yet, I'd like to get it from him, but...
Right, we were hoping to get an answer from the architect specifically. Uh, Commissioner, um, Montanez?
I guess these regulations are fairly new. My reading of the regulations is that he does have to provide a free board, and I guess just whatever we, um, grant in terms of bulk regulations, it'll still have to comply with the, um, new flood regulations.
Yes, I'd imagine, I mean, it did, it all did just come out, I believe, in January, it was, and everything was promulgated, so I don't know if it's been actually, anything's undergone review yet at Department of Buildings, coming from the board, but I would imagine if you include language, it would be subject to that review, of course, just to further reiterate, but we'd also be happy to get you a letter from the project architect for you, and document what we're talking about.
Okay. Any other questions? Any speakers on this item? Okay, we can close the hearing. We can get a lead from the architect by April first?
Yes.
And vote this out on April eighth.
Thank you.
Chair Shunivassen? Aye. Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen, two thirteen thirteen BZ, thirty-eight fifty-eight, there's sixty Victory Boulevard, Staten Island, the Office of Rothberg, Rothberg Inspector.
He's asked for an adjournment?
Yes, for three weeks.
Okay, so he can submit to us on April fifteenth, and we'll continue the hearing on April twenty-ninth.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen, two fifty-four thirteen BZ, twenty-eight eighty-one, Notre Namu, Brooklyn, the Office of Marvin Mitzner.
All right, the applicant's asked for an adjournment, we'll set the submission date for April... April twenty-second, and we'll have the hearing on May sixth.
Item number fifteen, two sixty-eight thirteen BZ, twenty-eight forty-nine, Crop CMU, Brooklyn, the Office of Belkin, Burden, Wenig and Goldman.
The applicant's here?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, uh, Belkin, Burden, Wenig and Goldman, Nicholas David here on behalf of the applicants, and I have, uh, the applicant here with me today as well.
Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant? All right, any speakers on this item? No speakers, we can close the hearing.
Thank you.
Chair Shunivassen? Aye. Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
We'll set the decision date for April eighth.
Thank you.
Okay, new cases, item number sixteen, three forty-seven dash twelve BZ, forty-two dash thirty-one Union Street, Queens, the Office of Vincent El Quetaro.
Good morning, my name is Mitchell Ross. I'm appearing of counsel at the Law Office of Vincent El Quetaro. Yesterday, we attended the review session, and were prepared to respond to many of the board's comments. Um, I have with me today, the project architect to answer any questions the board has regarding the plan, the design program. We have Mr. Freeman to answer any questions regarding the seven feasibility studies, uh, or scenarios submitted to the board. I would like to hand up to the board the summary of the seven scenarios.
Are they different from the ones that were submitted to the board yesterday? Or last night?
No, I just wasn't sure whether they were distributed. It's the same stuff.
Did the board members receive it?
I just have a copy.
Oh, okay.
Going to receive, oh, do we have them? I think we had a print ours out. Cause it said it was going to be distributed.
All right, I have... Commissioners, have a copy? I have my copy with me. We can share.
Okay.
If you don't have it, but thus we, we'll share it.
Okay, forgive me, I thought that they had come down, but they may not, if I needed. Also here today, we have a project soil engineer and project geologist, uh, who can take any questions from the board regarding, or to clarify the need for the extent of the excavation. Have Mr. Rothberg in attendance also, should the board have any questions pertaining to the environmental impact program as compared with the residential use. Okay, I do have copies of these, uh, comparison analyses of Mr. Freeman's scenarios. Uh, before we take the board's questions, um, I'd like to reiterate, first of all, that the project program, combining the conventional hotel use with the EDC mandated large community facility, uh, was dictated by the unique conditions and economic hardship and all considered as the right options. Uh, the program choices, which were necessitated by the circumstances of the lot, could not have been ameliorated by plan changes, and we are not seeking the board's relief or legalization of a problem which was our creation. This is true, even though regrettably, construction had to begin on an Azerbriet version of the building, owing to various, uh, highly uncommon pressures in the project, including the EDC timeframe and the federal immigration policy of the INS and the Homeland Security Agency mandating job creation deadlines under the EB five immigration program. We do understand that those pressures are irrelevant to the five findings, and didn't submit them for that purpose, but only describe them to the board because we regret, we regret that those deadlines have resulted in a sort of situation for the board, or an idea that possibly alternative feasible choices, which the board could have suggested in its wisdom, which the owner may have actually had, but did not realize he had, are removed from the board's table. The truth is that the proposed program is the only feasible development of the site, and that was determined based upon the owner's knowledge, experience, and consideration of all alternatives. Uh, we can demonstrate with cold, hard facts that any alternative design and program which might have been suggested, um, were we standing here today considering a site upon which construction had not commenced, would not have solved the problem presented by the zoning law. Uh, and therefore, we maintain we would be ending up in the same use and program and design that we are suggesting the board permit. For the record, um, we cannot emphasize strongly enough, but this is not a case where an owner is coming before you, having made mistakes in selecting a program which he expects you to now alleviate, nor is this an owner hoping to obtain a windfall and unnecessary relief. In fact, the owner would have been quite pleased, to have been fortunate enough, to have a site with a feasible Azerbriet alternative, and not have to go to the great expense and worry whether this board will make a decision that the requested variance is merited. Finally, um, I ask the board to keep in mind that the merits of the proposed program, including the appropriateness of the use in this location, are underscored by the unanimous support of the project amongst the relative, the relevant parties, including the community board, the local council member, and the borough president. And that support, uh, even in spite, uh, even in spite of some complaints of, uh, some nearby residents about the inconveniences and occasional inevitable mistakes in the construction. Having said this, um, at this point, I'd be happy to take the board's questions, and then direct the questions to the appropriate consultant.
All right, uh, why don't we focus on the A finding itself? Uh, I know there were some concerns, uh, about, um, the costs associated with, um, certain plain hardships. Commissioner Montanez, why did you go first, and then Commissioner Ollie Brown after that?
Right, um, from about twenty-eight feet below grade down to where you finally placed your foundations at about fifty feet below grade, you have the same type of class three A dense sand. So, my question was, um, I think you exacerbated your hardship regarding shoring and underpinning by going, putting in four sub-levels. I can see the two sub-levels to get down to good bearing soil, but I, I couldn't really see the four.
Okay, we have the, um, uh, soil geotech engineer here who can discuss that issue. Actual site conditions varied from the borings that were there, and so I'd like to call up that consultant, uh, to answer any of those questions, and to explain to the board what actual site conditions as the site was being executed revealed.
Hi, good morning, my name is Jackman Prescott. I am the geotechnical engineer present on the project currently. I'm open to any of your questions.
Um, which company? Uh, we've received actually three different reports. Which company do you work for?
Uh, five B Architecture and Engineering.
Okay, I guess that's a four. From the borings, it looked, all the borings said that from twenty-eight feet down to fifty feet, you were going to have this very good foundation material, the class three A dense sand. And instead of putting in, say, two sub-sellers, you opted to go to four sub-sellers. That wasn't really because of any geotechnical reason, or, or was it?
Uh, yes, it was. Uh, during the excavation, we encountered large boulders, um, at the level, at the twenty-eight feet level, that wasn't present in the borings. Now, one or two of the borings had indicated that we may encounter boulders, but when we got down to that level, the boulder, area of the boulders that we encountered was significant on the site. So, at that point, when we started taking out the boulders, the soils below that level, created a situation where we could have settlement. Uh, one of the options that I did investigate was driving in piles. Uh, we didn't want to go with that option because of the age of the buildings, the surrounding buildings. Those buildings would have been vi, uh, there would have been a lot of vibration and a lot of cracks to those buildings. We also looked at drilling in piles, but drilling in piles at that site, we may have encountered more boulders, so when we started excavating a little deeper, we started encountering more boulders at different areas in the site. So, we went down to that depth in order to mitigate any settlement. The blow counts at fifty feet were extremely high. I did look at the loads that were being transmitted from the superstructure above, and I felt at that depth that there would be minimum to zero settlement, once the building was constructed.
So, to what depth did you encounter boulders?
I, I would say any starting from thirteen feet, and we encountered boulders as, as low as about thirty-five feet, we were encountering boulders.
And, any particular area?
Uh, it was very regular. In the center of the site, we encountered a lot of boulders. To the back of the site, there wasn't as many boulders. I would say to the front half, and to the middle half, we were encountering a lot of boulders on the site.
So, this is based on the excavation that's already taken place on the site?
Only an excavation, correct.
So, previously, you had these various tests, which talked about boulders, but not necessarily at the depth that you found when you encountered the site?
Yes.
But you were already intending to go at that time up below grade up to fifty feet, were you not? Because that was what the proposal was?
The, the proposal at the time, once I saw boulders in there, I was very concerned because I worked on several other projects?
Mm-hmm.
Where I've seen this before, where, once you see a boulder on the site or in the boring, um, typically, the borings are only indicative of that era that they're taken in, but once I saw, um, some type of excavation going on at the site, and I saw boulders showing up in several of the borings, I was very concerned, stating if I did design something to that depth, and then we got down at that depth, and it wasn't any, it wasn't effective the design, then we were looking at several other options. So, I investigated those options prior, and at the time, I felt that fifty feet would mitigate any issues, you know, once we got down to that depth.
To make sure that it would be solid, so you could put your mat foundation against those piles?
Correct.
Commissioner?
Would there have been any way to construct a building without disturbing the boulders by somehow just putting piles through? I don't know.
That's, that's an excellent question. Um, sometimes the piles squeeze through, but they could deviate. Uh, once you start installing them, they could dog that, dog like to the right or the left, so I didn't want to take that chance. Um, it was too risky of driving in piles and them, the pile impacting the boulder, and then moving to the left or right of the boulder, then the pile becomes ineffective.
So, if you had to go below thirteen feet, you'd be, you'd be encountering these boulders, and so?
Correct.
Either stop below before thirteen feet, or go all the way down to fifty feet to really clear the hardship of, I mean...
Correct.
Make sure that your foundations are structurally sound.
So, could you have stopped at thirteen feet, and then instead of exploring cellar options, explore adding floors above grade?
Well, 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 the problem, the problem we would have encountered is that the boulders were very uneven, even if you built in them, we didn't, we did not know what the soils were like below it, so as we were taking them out, we found that the soils strata changed tremendously below the boulders. So, my major concern basically with that size of building was the settlement. So, I just wanted to put it on, on a sound soil, where there was no settlement, uh, to be encountered later.
Okay, and, but you don't have any survey, because this was done on the site, which shows where the boulders are, or it was all done while?
Yeah, it was on site condition.
Okay.
All right.
Commissioner Montanez, any question on that?
I just was curious if they ever changed? Did you ever have any drawings where you changed the foundation design, in terms of the number of sub-sellers you put in?
Uh, no, I, I just went based on experience, uh, working on different sites where, when you encounter, you see borings with boulders on it, um, drilling in piles. I know we, we're currently working on a, at a site in Long Island City, that's similar with boulders on the site, and it's, it took us two years just to navigate piles, and it's very expensive. So, my automatical default in my head from previous projects was just to get down, just keep digging until we get to competent material.
Could you put some of this in writing?
That's not a problem.
That'd be very helpful, in fact, your represent, how you've represented it today would be good if it's in the record.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, yes, you had another question about the underground, the...
Uh, no, actually, I felt like this explanation helped me to understand that it wasn't just a design decision to...
Okay.
Have those four sellers.
Right. And what about the issue of the irregularity of the lot and increasing?
I didn't raise that yesterday.
You talked about the irregularity of the lot and the cellar being built out at the lower levels?
Oh, no, oh, yeah, but more as a question of
Okay.
...related to, was this a design decision
Okay.
...to have a larger development and then create a hardship, and it was addressed?
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Was there any other issues on the A finding? Okay, why don't we talk about the B finding? Because I know I had commented, as well as Commissioner Ottley-Brown, that there were, we saw some real flaws in the financial. So, even if we accept the cost associated, the hardship cost that you've identified, it seems that because of potentially what seems like errors in the financials, all the residential scenarios work. So, if Mr. Feeman is here, and he could speak to that.
Good morning, Jack Feeman, on behalf of the applicant. I attended the review session. I heard four questions, so we could go through each of them. First question is the one that just came up. It was whether or not two floors of cellar community facilities were included. All in all, although you've seen seven, we analyzed over ten alternatives, and we'll review to see if there were any inadvertent omissions and correct them if necessary.
Okay, well, I think I'd like to
As many of them
I'd like to point out what we see are the flaws, and I think it was helpful. And, so if you have this, this paper in front of you, it'd be very helpful that you, you know, you should get it, because I want to walk through some of the numbers with you. Last one. Yes.
Jack?
Okay, so, if you look at Schedule A1.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so, you've noted, these are all the residential scenarios, and I think those are the ones we'd like to focus on. You've talked, you've shown that you have the cellar community facility is forty-two thousand square feet in all of them, and the community facility above grade is forty-eight thousand, correct?
Right.
Okay. If you go to the next page, and you look at the proposed hotel development, it's approximately the same. Community facility, cellar is forty-two thousand, and then community facility above grade is forty-eight thousand.
Yes, the community facility space is roughly the same in all.
Now, you go to the income and expenses, and you look at the community facility space line, and you've attributed two million dollars, approximately, across the line, right? And if you look at the hotel scheme, you'll see that you've got approximately two million dollars for the community facility income, and then you have cellar community facility income of one point five million, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's missing.
That's what I want to look at further and find out why that's the case, and then I'll be able to get back to you.
Okay, I'm
I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, I just
But I just want to note that, just if you do the calculations and you just add that income in, and using the same cap rate, you are going to get, basically, for all these residential developments, you are going to get a profit that is almost close to one hundred and sixty-one thousand, which is
I'll also note that
I just want to point this out to you. Please, just, if you can hear me through this, you'll get that, as well as, which is rough, it's about one-twenty to one-twenty-five thousand, and it's higher, it's almost equivalent to the typical development, and it's higher than your hotel, which is fifty-one thousand. So, I'm not sure why there's that issue. Yes, Commissioner?
Yeah, I want to just state also, for the record, that if you add in even a portion of that missing gross income for the cellar, because I would assume that you want to take expenses out of it, and you capitalize that, and you don't change any of the other indicators in terms of construction costs or site value, or other income, or other vacancy rates, all of your scenarios should be feasible in terms of the residential, which then begs the question, why do we need a change to a transient hotel?
I see what you're talking about. I also will note, however, that one of the other things that is different is, if you look at, it wasn't attached, but when we capitalized the commercial space for the condominium alternative, we used a nine percent cap rate. When we did the hotel, we used a blended cap rate between nine and five and a half percent of seven percent. The below-grade commercial space should not be valued in the same way as the above-grade space, and I want to look at that as well, because the cap rate is floating around, too, Commissioner. And I just, I want to take a look at the whole picture.
Right, I understand that, and, but
So, yes, if we use a five and a half percent cap rate, which was not what was used on the hotel, and was not used for capitalizing
But the cap rate typically for residential is lower than
Residential should be five and a half percent, but for below-grade commercial space, the cap rate at five and a half percent would be the wrong cap rate. And I really, between yesterday and today
Right, but you did use that single cap rate to value this. As we see, when we're looking at the residential
I understand.
You approached it with the single cap rate. And now, you are saying that you want to change the methodology and blend your cap rate, so that even though we have additional income, the effect of that additional income will be muted and will result in a lower value, because you are going to basically use a higher cap rate, because the blend is going to
I want to explore and understand how we got into this corner, and I'd like to get back to you on it.
I understand that, and you, we'll allow you that opportunity, but what's troubling to me is that this is supposedly, and if this is an error, it's an error that has been in four reports that have been presented.
Yes, that would be correct.
And I think it just calls into question, calls into question the credibility of the report. But, I understand you feel that there's a change. What would be helpful to us, if you're talking about blended cap rates? I think we want to understand what the cap rate is that you've used for community facility space below and above grade for all the scenarios, right? I can understand the argument that the community facility cap rate may be different for the community, the cap rate for the community facility may be different than the residential, but presumably, it'll be the same for, whether it's a hotel scenario
Yes.
...condominium scenario, or the rental
Well, that's what I want to take a look at, and I'd like to get the opportunity to just respond, and if
But if you can show us, we'd like to understand how you got to the blended cap.
I can do that for you, yes. But I'm just not prepared today to say, other than there appears to have been an error made, and I'd like to take a look at it and get back to you.
Right, but prior to now, in these four iterations of reports, in addition to that error in the income, you then are stating there was an error in the cap rate, because you use an unblended cap rate across the board
For the residential alternatives?
Yes.
But we, except for the condominium, we used a nine percent cap rate for the commercial space, and that was, that's in the record, and for the hotel, we used a blended cap rate of seven percent. So, I want to take a look at all of the factors we did to value this and have the opportunity to get back to you.
Okay, and I think it's worthwhile, then, to also justify what these cap rates are. If anything, it's nine percent, I just want to understand why, and
We'll do that. I think we did provide schedules from a third-party source, but we'll take a look at those as well. That was the first question, I believe. The second question was the weighted average for condos was incorrect, and that will be corrected. We agree.
Oh, you do agree. And then, we had a question as well about the site value?
Regarding, we will review and add or adjust. I heard your question, and we will do that. You also had questions regarding additional hotel comps. We will run another survey with Smith Travel and add some additional hotels to it.
Some higher-quality hotels.
Well, we will look at
Because that was my comment, is that if you're, if you're expecting Westin and Hyatt, then you shouldn't be using the Red Roof Inn as a comparable.
We'll take a look at that, and we'll just run another STAR report. We'll add some different flags, and we'll have a different set of comparables over here.
Okay. Were there other questions for the applicant? I know I had some, except some other, you pointed to me.
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair, you had some questions.
Well, I wanted to get a further explanation of what the role of the economic
Yes.
...incorporation was in this. It's mentioned in your papers, but it's not fully fleshed out.
Right. Well, it was mentioned not to make any of the five findings, first of all. So, in that respect, it's not central or, in some ways, relevant to the case. It was mentioned because there is a policy and a need for the community facility, and this was supported to the extent that there is a bond opportunity for more advantageous financing that could have been used. And unfortunately, for part of the bond, an initial offering, a deadline was missed, and there is the potential to take advantage of another issuance of less of a bond. There was this policy and this push by EDC because the closing of some area hospitals and the need for this kind of a facility in the area.
Okay.
Yep. That's, that's the only reason
Just that it was supported by the agency because of the community facility use, right? I think there's a need for medical facility, and they were supportive of that.
Right.
Can you talk a little bit about the hotel rooms? You mentioned this, I mean, that what you need is the use variance for the transient hotels, but they're, they're so large, they're almost the size of small apartments. Are they intended to be extended stay accounts, or is it really transient? What is it?
Okay. Well, there's two things about the size of the units. First of all, the size of the units is partially dictated by a concern of the community board to keep the unit number as low as possible. Also, in this area, it's presumed that you'll have a need for possibly both, both types of hotel stays. The apartment hotel type and the transient type. And so, by obtaining the use variance, it gives the option to use the building in accordance with the demand.
But are all the, all the units large, or are they, is there a mix of unit sizes?
All the units are large, all the units are large, and actually, some of the units can be combined.
I'm not under surprise.
I have the architect, if the architect can, but all of the units are the same
So, but it's right now, you're proposing, I think, a hundred and sixty-room hotel, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, but, or a hundred and eighty, is it something like that, right?
My name is Shiva Verstappen, from Fleet Architect. I can help with some layout questions.
All right, can you tell us how many room hotels this is, just to?
The density control for this land was a hundred and sixty-three for residential unit.
Okay.
So, we are thinking about this variance to make it like a transient hotel. Ideally, we could make it a lot more, like up to two-hundred-and-twenty-two units. But we do have concerns from the community board. They don't want to increase the density. So, rather do that, we sort of like combine two hotel rooms into a suites unit. That's why the size increased.
Right, but now, everybody is forced to basically rent a suite, isn't that correct?
Um, yes, for
Isn't it another way to approach this, if you're asking for transient use, to make your hotels just smaller, but have room sizes that are more typical? For example, if you go and look at other hotels, I think we had questioned the comparables anyway, but even if you're looking at Hyatt and Westin as some of the potential operators, isn't it worthwhile to look at what their room sizes are, and if you're going to propose them? Because all I see is that you have a hotel use where your floor plans are very similar to your residential floor plans, and you made them hotel units. Isn't that correct?
Not exactly, actually. For residential, this would be too small, because we sort of go like midway from residential to hotel. When we spoke to Starwood, we got direction for like a current market. What they needed most is this kind of combined units. It's the most like useful unit.
But when you say combined units, I'm not sure I understand. Does it mean they have the option to rent them out separately or combine them, or they're all going to be the larger units?
Percentage-wise, I would say like eighty percent is like this, and some of them is still considered like one room, some is like suite size. So, again, we try to follow Starwood, and they have this combination percentage. This is how we go by.
Okay, so I think maybe in the next iteration, as a part of the analysis for hotel rooms, if you can just break that down for us, how many, what the sizes of these, whether they're suites, whether they're
Yeah, we can provide a chart like that.
Whether they're the larger luxury rooms, and perhaps you could look at Starwood's own costing and how they rate these rooms, and use that as the base, since you're basing it on a Starwood model.
Yes.
Okay. That, that would make sense. I think it'll at least make us understand that if there is a basis to grant variance for, for transient use or a hotel, that in fact, we have a hotel which is the minimum necessary needed to, to make the project feasible.
Okay.
Okay?
And again, I don't think we're up to eight hundred feet. I think roughly six hundred square feet, that's the size we have now. So, that would be almost impossible for residential use.
Well, I think the question isn't so much of whether it's impossible for residential use. I think it's just a question of whether these, these rooms for the hotel are overly large, and what was the reason for that? And if they're overly large, are they being priced at the same amount as overly large room in other hotels?
But we can certainly make it smaller, just to be like a typical hotel rooms.
Well, I think that's another issue, because I think there's a real land use concern about increasing the number of, number of keys at the site. You could have a three-hundred-room hotel. I think it would cause other kinds of land use issues. The way to address the issue is not, not so much to get in more units, but to reduce the overall density of the hotel, and maybe make a smaller building. That is the, that is the, the way to go. Not to have this envelope fixed in place and, you know, shift around the units.
Right. I under, right. I understand that the issue is minimum, minimum variance, and so, we're going to look at this issue
Okay.
And see whether or not this meets the minimum variance finding, okay?
Okay, yes. All right.
Yeah, you know, I just had a quick question. Actually, not, not for the architect, just sort of a general question. Vice Chair brought up the, the notion that there are government entities that have participated in this project, and I just wanted to be clear that those programs really just only pertain to the community facility and not any use above the community facility, or any change in use that this board would give it.
That, that's correct. And that's correct. And those programs are separate, and if there was any relevance of the other part, it would have to do only with the likelihood of success of what it is that they are interested in, which is the community facility building. The community facility building by itself is not economically feasible, and so, we're sort of betwixt in between, but we recognize that EDC didn't get into that issue.
Okay.
Although they are interested, this be feasible and not be a problem down the road.
Okay, are there other questions? I know that a comment was made yesterday about the noise, and I think it would be helpful to just revisit that issue, Commissioner. I know, I think both
We both mentioned it in different contexts.
Right, that there is an issue about, I think you've made an argument that it's within the flight path, and whether that depresses the residential revenue. It does, it doesn't.
No, the end, okay.
We were confused by that.
Right. That, in any of, in any of the economic analysis, that was, that was not included.
Okay, so you're not basing
I can remove that from the statement or clarify it. I included that almost anecdotally, anecdotally
Okay.
That the desirability of the use or the effect of regular noise, and I recognize, as Commissioner Ottley-Brown said, this is an area with other tall apartment buildings, and they're there.
Right.
The fact, but the fact of the matter is, the, the impact of regular airplane noise is going to be more on someone who's there for longer term and someone who's there for shorter term, and our position is, that makes this kind of a use more natural. Not that the other uses are, you know, the other residential uses are failing because of it, but still, we have a choice here. And so, again, I'll make that clear in the statement, that it's not put in as a reason to depress income.
Okay.
Right, and, and my comment really wasn't even talking about the depressed income. It was basically saying that I can understand that logic closer to the airport, but this isn't that close to the airport, and I had said that it was nestled within other residential uses, old pre-existing uses, as well as new residential uses, and so, that's why I was not convinced about that. Not at this location.
Okay. When we get more into the C finding, we can see what we can do to try and actually measure that noise and compare that to somewhere out of the flight path, because as I understand it, the reason for the flight path, that these planes are flying, even though they're fairly, this is farther away from the airport than many other residences, it's still, they're still significantly lower. They're on the way in, and they're down, and the noise is pretty significant. So, we can get those, we can get those measurements, if it's necessary, down the road.
Okay. Are there any other questions? All right, I just had a comment for the architect, and maybe when you come back to us, you could just revise some of the floor plans to be more clear, because I think if you look at the ground floor plans, especially the ground floor plan, it's just very unclear where the entrances are, and both for the hotel, for the garage
Yes. This was also, this was also initially some confusion for the community board, so we have done some presentation material.
You don't need to show them, you can just, if you can correct them and just make it very clear.
Okay, okay. We have them, if we can walk you through it right now, briefly, with the board?
Right, I just, I really want to look at the ground floor plan, not the below-grade plans.
Maybe a little smaller.
Okay, is that the ground floor plan?
Yeah.
Okay, I can't see it from here. Okay. Why don't you just submit to us? Why don't you just submit to us? And I think.
We'll submit it and we'll walk you through it at the next hearing.
Okay, that seems fine. Okay, are there speakers on this item? Yes, please come forward.
Please state your name for the recognition of the microphone. You'll be given three minutes.
James Tricus, co-president of the Holly Civic Association. We believe a transient hotel will attract more undesirables or those involved in illegal activities due to their very short stays. This also makes it harder for the police to investigate and arrest transients committing crimes or other illegal activities. Transient hotels help increase the appeal for prostitution in our neighborhood and are in illegal activities. This is a residential area surrounded by apartment buildings, which is six stories high. You've got a church on the corner next door. You've got a, a public school across the street. This is not a commercial area and should not be a place for a hotel, especially a transient hotel. Now, I believe the builders have been, would have had far more opposition to this plan and no approval from the community had they been, been known that this was supposed to be a transient hotel. The builders and developers appear deceptive with the community. And I'll tell you why. Because on the articles, it first started out as an eight-story building, a medical facility, that this is what's supposed to be. Which, a medical facility, yes, you could see it could fit in the community a little bit better and has a purpose. Then that changed to a hotel. Then they changed it at Community Board Seven to a transient hotel. And the implied opinion from Community Board Seven was, so they can make more money as a transient hotel. And I find that totally wrong. In addition to that, there's many problems or complaints. We have, even in the Community Board Seven, it had been made clear that they were supposed to be working between certain hours. And it was supposed to be ending at 4:30. I have to find the direct hours. But apparently, it was supposed to stop at 4:30. Community Board Seven made it clear, this, you must stop work after 4:30. You're disturbing the people in the community. And to report any complaints to Community Board Seven. Well, apparently, the next two people that live right next door and many other people have been complaining to me. This is an ongoing thing, to nine o'clock, 10 o'clock at night. We've got pictures with the show working late at night. I can't trust the developers in anything they say. Therefore, I cannot believe, trust, or have faith in the owner or developer for this project and foresee many community problems that we will have to deal with. If you must allow a hotel in this area, it should be a regular hotel, not a transient hotel. We don't need a transient hotel. And I don't understand why there can't be short stays in a regular hotel. Why do you have to be a transient hotel? Why is that your sole requirement? The builder and developer does not care about how this will affect the community. If a hotel has to be built, like I said, it should be a normal hotel and not, and not a transient hotel. Now, I don't know if you want to see a bunch of these pictures to see what they have been doing, ignoring the.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay.
And I just want to make a couple of comments. One is that construction, issues with construction should be directed towards Department of Buildings. If you have any complaints or people in the neighborhood have complaints that they're going beyond the hours of their permit, they should take care of that. I just want to ask you a question about this distinction, distinction between a transient hotel and a hotel. What are you imagining that?
Well, we know it's supposed to be under 30 days. But what it's really going to end up being is very short stays. Not even a week. It's probably going to be a day, two days. People come in and out.
Right, but you said.
That's usually.
But you said it can, why it should function like a normal hotel.
It should be a regular hotel. That would, the community would accept, not a transient.
Normal hotels do have people staying for a few days.
That, we're okay with that.
So what is the distinction?
They want a transient hotel as opposed to a regular hotel because it's a more profit motive for them. They make more money as a transient one. That's what they told Community Board Seven.
Right, from a zoning standpoint, there is no difference.
No, for money. They can make more money on shorter stays than charging them normal stays.
Okay, well, we lost the applicant to clarify. I suspect that the kind of hotel that they're proposing here is a standard typical hotel. And I'd, even if they use the word transient.
They changed that. That's what they said to Community Board Seven, that they went from an eight-story medical facility to a regular hotel. Then they went to a transient hotel because they needed to make more money. And they wanted a shorter stay than a typical hotel.
Okay, we'll clarify with the applicant, okay?
So you want me to submit these so you guys can look at them?
You can submit that if you want.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other speakers on this item? Yes, please come forward. Given three minutes.
Good afternoon, my name is Erica Brasso. I live next door where the, where is the, the building going to be going up. We lots, lots of time, we have lots of program for two years, three years already. I mean, it's unbelievable the way they're working. It's not safe for anybody around us. Our building is cracking. They start fixing it little by little. It's not only our building. All over around to this project, everybody's property was damaged. Okay? They post to work finally, Board Seven and also the Borough President, they signed the paper, they said they post to work up to 4:30. Okay, they don't, they're doing all kind of work day and night, every time. It doesn't matter what. The way they're doing this construction site, it's very dangerous for everybody. This is not supposed to be the way it is. I'm not a contractor guy, but this, the way they're working, it's unbelievable. It's unbelievable. They're pouring cement when it's seven degrees outside, seven, when it's ice and cold and everything. So why they pouring cement when they don't even have a foundation yet? The whole place is going to be fall down. You're going to be see, you mark my word, this building going to be collapsing. Okay? Not only our, but theirs too. And, and they keep promising us for everything and nothing happened. Every time we go to the board, they're always complaining. We complaining, we're not really complaining because we try to be nice neighbor. They are the one who come to us. Our building, okay, it's fine, 100 years old, fine. But what about the rest of the area? We have only seven-floor building all over around. Why do you want to put a 17-floor building middle of the block? And then they blocking everybody driveway, everybody, 300 parking garage. This parking, how this car going to be coming, going out on the Dulu Street? We have already so much complaint about the parking and everything else. I mean, nobody care about us. Nobody really care about the tenants, about the neighborhood. I mean, and the school right next to it, and the church, and the nursing home and everything. And with the noise. The noise, forget the noise. Because we call 311 million times, not me, everybody else around us. Okay, because the area is echo. That's why we get more noise because of the echo. And they don't do nothing about it. And we kept asking them, please do something, because this is really unbelievable. It's, we can't really rest, we can't do nothing anymore. And why we paying rent when these people, they're coming around and they put this big thing and they disturb everybody life for three years already. It's three years already. And it's going to be on and on and on. And, and then also for his workers, they don't wearing any, any kind of protection and all that.
I'm, I'm, sorry, your time is up.
It's going on.
Sorry, my time is up.
So, okay, any question?
Uh, no, thank you.
Nobody.
The next speaker.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members. My name is David Rosenberg, Marcus Rosenberg and Diamond. We represent First Baptist Church of Flushing. It's the property owner immediately to the north of this construction site. As, as I know the commission is clearly aware, when you put in a medical facility with 80,000 square feet of offices on nine floors, you put in a transient hotel, you are going to have a traffic impact. And this is a residential area where the number of cars now that will be coming in and out will clearly have a huge impact on congestion, noise, pollution in the area. And I don't believe they have properly addressed that. And, and the developer hasn't been a good neighbor. The proponent's attorney said, and of course, there are inevitably mistakes. Well, this, this project has been riddled with, quote, mistakes. Without asking permission, without obtaining permission in supporting the walls that they poured through the excavation when they put in the temporary shoring, they drilled soil nails into the church's property. Again, without permission, without asking, without telling the church. And this is going to make it very difficult for the church now to construct a long-planned addition. They haven't been good neighbors to anyone in the area. There are cracks on adjacent buildings on the church's property itself. There is a line that you can see about, that runs between three and nine feet from the property line. It goes down at least eight inches. I've seen a ruler stuck into it, where the soil cracked by reason of the excavation adjacent to it. Now, they may have brought in all kinds of geotecs, but they did not do anything to protect the neighboring properties. At this point, we are going to have to completely redesign the church's foundation for its new building. They're going to have to put in piles that they never were going to have to have before. It was going to be a mat and that was going to support a relatively small building. Because the soil has been so disturbed, that's not going to be possible anymore. It's going to have to be excavated, refilled, and piles put in. And now I hear that there are boulders in the area, something our geotech didn't actually pick up yet. But that will probably increase our costs, which already probably exceed $100,000 because of the damage caused by this excavation, because of the carelessness and the lack of concern for the neighbors. And I only bring this up both because of the five finallys, but because they're not a good neighbor. Because they haven't been a good neighbor to the community. And when you ask for something special, you should at least show that you're going to be a decent neighbor throughout.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. Have you reported these issues to the Buildings Department?
Yes, and, and they haven't bothered to mention, Your Honor, that in fact, there is a partial stop-work order on the project at this point. They have, they keep going back and modifying the plans and saying they're going to add support. There was a complete stop-work order issued by DOB. It's now a modified stop-work order, but it's in existence to this day. I looked on, on the biz site today, that stop-work order is in effect. So they come here as if they're doing everything wonderfully. They've had these geotecs, they've had these structural engineers. But the impact of what they're doing shows that really, they're just pulling ahead and building the project and then coming for permission afterwards.
All right, I just to also clarify, my understanding is that they filed, they have filed drawings at the Buildings Department, which allows them to build a project without coming to the board. So theoretically, whatever they're building on the site right now is not really been approved by this board, but it's been approved by the Buildings Department.
No, I understand.
Okay. All right, I just want to also clarify, so the, the church is where? It's, what is the address of the church?
The, the church's address is 4215 Union Street. It's immediately adjacent and to the north.
Well, is, am I wrong? There, there's no in-between property?
No, that's owned by the church.
Okay, that's owned by the church.
I'm sorry, there's a wood frame building there.
Right.
That the church plans to demolish and build an extension to the existing church building on that property. That's where we're going to have to completely redesign our whole foundation and structural work for that addition, which was originally just going to be on a mat. And now we're going to have to dig out the soil, which is no longer worthy of supporting the building, refill and drive piles according to our geotecs. And it's probably going to cost us $100,000 or more.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? Are there more speakers on this item? You've already spoken, you're not, cannot speak again. Are there any other speakers? Are there any other speakers? Okay, Mr. Ross?
Okay, just briefly. Any cracking in adjacent buildings is something that's being monitored by the Building Department. And it, it also speaks to the issues and the difficulty that we have here and the decisions of soil tech engineers and why the kind of excavation was necessary rather than augured piles or pounded piles. It supports the situation that we're saying that we had. Regarding the, I know the board understands the concern about the transient hotel really is, is a misunderstanding of, of the zoning term. This is a conventional hotel being requested. And it will be a higher-end type hotel, Starwood. Those hotels regularly have stays of a day or two or three. It's not expected there's going to be anything shorter than a one-day stay permitted at this hotel. Okay, let's make that clear. The Community Board, despite the input of the neighbors and the concerns about this issue and the Civic Association, after looking at all of the circumstances, supported the application, as did the Borough President and the City Council member. Certainly, the, the owner regrets and is doing everything possible to try and ameliorate any impact during the construction and has also made himself available and us available to the Community Board. If the Community Board ever wanted to act as an intermediary, we've been responsive. Again, with respect to what's being said by the lawyer for the church and the church property next door, as the Chair pointed out, the building now under construction isn't as of right. The building, the as of right dimensions, as of right bulk. Again, the, the shoring that we've done along the lot line is in accordance with code and adequate. And we would say actually helps their situation in whatever soil conditions they would have been facing that if they're as bad as ours, well, we, we feel bad for them. But we had a similar problem and they might not be able to do a mat foundation. But that's not because of anything that we've done. The 300, the 300 parking.
And your shoring plans and all those were signed off by the Buildings Department?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. The, the size of, the size of the parking garage and the 300 spaces, again, those are attended spaces increased at the request of the Community Planning Board. We actually have done analysis. Mr. Rothberg from EPD SEO, which shows that the impact actually of the commercial use and peak hours, there's less conflicts than there would be with longer stay or residential use. And Mr. Rothberg can discuss that at, at another time, if, another time, if, if the board would like.
Well, just on the issue of, I have two questions. One is the 300 attendance spaces. Are there stackers also on these floors or they're just?
No, no stackers.
Okay, just want to understand that, no stackers. And the second question I had is, in any analysis that Mr. Rothberg has performed, what is, what is he comparing the project to? Is it an 18-story building? Is it the 14-story building? Is it the 12-story building? And why? If you can clarify that to us.
Okay, I'll have Mr. Rothberg respond in writing.
Right, and I think what, based on that, first of all, it should not be in comparison to the 18-story building because the 18-story building is not allowed as of right. So let's take that off the table. Seems your proposal is a 12-story building. The Buildings Department drawings a 14-story building. Whichever it is, it should also be reflected not only in the, in the traffic analysis, but in the EAS all, overall. And so the issues that are raised because you have a height that, and I don't know if the ES has already looked at it, but you have a height of a building that extends from 155 feet to 230 feet. And that should be analyzed as well from terms of shadow impacts and light and air. So if, just want to make sure that that, it becomes very clear. It's not clear, I think it was, maybe wrong, but I think it was a short form. But I don't know if any shadow analysis has been done. That should be looked at. And I think we'd like to have a bigger understanding or better understanding of the traffic and noise impacts as well as construction impacts, since construction is already taking place.
Okay, I understand. I think we shouldn't be considering a special permit. It's not, it's not as of rights.
Exactly.
Okay?
Okay, very good. There's one other person who wanted to speak? You wanted to speak, please come forward. Give you three minutes.
My name is Gabriela Olano. I live next door to 4231 Union Street. And I have a problem with this construction. For the, for the reason is, if they want to do a medical center, the whole building should be a medical center, not a hotel. Okay? Okay? The block is only 10 houses in this little, little block, and if they're going to have this big building, there's no parking for the community, as it is. It is so bad. Last night, for example, I had to wait an hour just to go around to find a parking spot. So when's this construction be finished? Where is all these, my neighbors or the people that live in the area, where going to park? And if there's under garage, is that, is that free for everybody, or they had to pay? Because if they had to pay for the parking spot, obviously, they're not going to park in underground parking if it's free parking on the street. Okay? And the sewer, what's going to happen to the sewer with this humongous building when the sewer is only for that, that small block, what is over 100 years old? What's going to happen to all the water and the pressure and, and all this nonsense is going on? That's my question.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more speakers? No more speakers, we can set a schedule. Yes, of course, Vice Chair.
Mr. Ross, could you address the issue of the stop work order, what the status of it is, what's the reason for it?
I'm going to respond on that in writing.
You don't know right now?
The developer's here, the developer's here and can talk to it.
Why don't we, why don't we get an answer to that? And then I also would like you to address the issue of the after-hours construction work that the neighbors have complained about, and they've given photographic evidence of.
We'll address it, we'll address it. As I understand it, the after-hours-
Someone talk about it now.
Okay.
How often has it happened? Why is it happening? Why are you working it for the night in a residential neighborhood?
Yeah, my name is Chris Shreja. I'm coming from Play Financial Group as a development company of this project. And just, first question is for the stop work order. And the original design is using a ricker to support, you know, the portion of the church property, because they don't allow the soil nail to be drilled into their foundation. And because the depths of the foundation is about 55 feet, it's, so the ricker size is giant ricker size, it's about like, probably like 36-inch diameter, like pipe need to be installed. And, but before they can do the installation, they find out there is actually major 311, like fiber optic line, just right across from the property. And there's no way like to lift such a giant ricker to be, you know, across from the wire into the job site. That's why that, that area need to be redesigned and using a different way to support it. As a partial stop work order, call for to modify the design, to use a different way to support that, because the original design for the ricker is almost impossible concerning like the major 311 optical line. And that happened all the time because the real field condition like changed, and we were talking to the Time Warner Cable, because they own the line, they own the pole, but they were thinking like it's going to take them six months to burying the whole line, and it costs the project half million dollars. So that's why it's all constantly, it's a construction, constantly making adjustment, trying to make sure that it's a challenge, very challenged foundation, and it's a very challenged project. That's, you know, it's been like closely working with excavation unit of the building department, and make sure that all the questions can be properly addressed.
Excuse me, you're talking about an overhead line in the street?
Yeah.
Okay, so you can't move the pipe in?
The pipe is so big, it's like, you know, if you have to support like a foundation 55, and the pipe is going to be probably like more than 80, 90 feet, and you need a giant crane to lift those things, but no crane company is willing to lift those giant, like, pipe over the city major 311 fiber optic line.
Okay.
Yeah. Working on the, beyond ours is like, I don't know if, it's more than like 10,000 cubic yard concrete have been poured, and even, you know, we bring them into smaller piece, and sometimes like need like 200, 300 yard, like concrete be poured. And we were talking to the Community Board even at the meeting, because we volunteer to, you know, to not start working like at seven at every other project, we actually start, volunteers start at 7:30 and close at 4:30. Based on the city regulation, we are allowed to work until six. But sometimes we already make the Community Board aware of that because of the size of the foundation, because of the size of the concrete be poured, and once the concrete started pouring, you need really, you cannot stop, you have to pour everything in one shot, make sure that the integrity of the structure. So that's only, only sense, you know, like the concrete be poured, it's not like you're working there.
All right, I understand the difficulty in interrupting a concrete pour, but if, if you properly manage your project, you can go to the Buildings Department and get a permit for after-hours work-
Yeah, we do.
And you can notify, and you can notify the neighbors.
We have, we pour like hundreds of after-hours permit. Every time we do the work, we go to like a uniform report after-hours permit.
You have an after-hours permit when you're being-
Yes, yeah, you can, we can show you the record, you can see that, how many times we-
And I think you should produce that, because we've heard testimony from the neighbors today that's, that's sort of at variance with what you're telling us, so you should clarify.
Yeah, they're like, I, I, I understand the condition, I've been closely talked to them, I actually have the record, because it's a hundred star, 100 years old wood structure, four-story building, and it's very challenging for us to go down like on the proper line for 55 feet. So far, you know, even for the old crack inside their building, we send the workers there constantly to their apartment to fix it, we take the picture, we ask them to sign, we have all the record, we can present to the board.
Good, why don't you produce that?
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, why don't we set a schedule? How much time do you need? Probably a month?
Three weeks should be sufficient. Three weeks is enough.
Three weeks?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be April 15, and we'll continue the hearing on April 29.
Item number 17, calendar number 25313BZ, 66-31 Booth Street, Queens, Eric Palatnik.
Hello, good afternoon, Eric Palatnik, how are you?
Good, I think we just, we had a few questions.
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes, how do you make the basement smaller?
Spoke to the architect yesterday to discuss that, Jerry Calandos, the architect, and what they did was they accounted for a space out of the chases, the plumbing chases that had previously been counted when the homes were originally filed, which are permitted deductions, and that's how they gained the square footage out of the cellar level, out of the basement level. We'll be giving-
Does that appear on a drawing somewhere?
No, it doesn't. We responded, we inquired yesterday, we knew it made, inquired, and we got a verbal answer. We will give you back a drawing that shows you the calculations.
Like a before and after drawing?
Yeah, sure, definitely.
The amazing basement?
Yes.
Well, they're just, it's the same floor plan, it's just that a portion of that is being-
They're not going to count, so I understand what the Vice Chair is looking for.
You're going to shave the area or something like that?
Yeah, something to depict it, I understand what he's looking for.
But I know the Commissioner, I know.
That was my concern, because you have the, you do have the deductions noted, but, you know, it's over 120 square feet between the few floors, and I was just wondering if the Buildings Department has agreed with them.
I will speak with the architect and see what their view is on it. I imagine they feel, the architect feels that they're permitted deductions, but let me get some more clarity on it if you're aboard, so you can have the same level of understanding and confidence.
But wouldn't the existing building then have less square, less floor area as well? So if, do you be recognized as deductions, unless they're converting space to mechanicals, wouldn't it be exactly the same? Right? So your ground floor hasn't changed. If it was always deducted from the Buildings Department and continues to be deducted, then there shouldn't be any change in the floor area?
No, unless the basement hasn't been counted, the deductions for the chases haven't been counted before.
So exactly, when you say the, are they changing the allocation of space within the ground floor?
They're not changing the physical-
Okay.
...space, but-
Are they converting some space that's otherwise-
Not at the basement level you're talking about?
Yes.
No, they're not doing anything physical there, there's just space that has not been taken as a deduction before-
But wouldn't it be-
They feel they can.
But that's, you know, my question is that-
I'm understanding.
Not taking as deduction is not the issue, it's a question of how the Buildings Department interprets floor area. So floor area in the basement under the existing condition, if it still has that chase, should be the same as the floor area under the proposed, because you're not making any changes.
Not sure I'm understanding what-
Am I wrong in saying this?
No, you're right. There's no changes to the basement.
There's no, there's no change.
There's no physical change to the basement, but-
So you don't start taking deductions, it's, it's really about how the department, what they consider as floor area.
Correct.
So it should be deducted, if you call it deduction, it should be not counted as floor area under the existing condition, as well as the proposed condition.
Yes, it would be equally the same in both, correct.
But that's not how it's shown.
That's what we're going to be correcting. I understand what Madam Chair and the Board is asking there.
Okay.
The, yes, it should be equal, equal on both, existing and the proposed scenario, and we will clarify to correct that, and we'll show you the calculations on paper so that you could see clearly, and it would uniformly affect both scenarios.
Okay.
I think that's where you're going.
Vice Chair, I know you had another question. Yes?
Sorry, Ben, I'm a little confused. Will it then affect the total amount of square footers that you could add? Because if you're limited to 10%-
Yes.
Now you're at 10% of a lower number.
Yes, it will address, it'll change the existing-
Well, it doesn't, it, you're 10% of what's permitted is what we're allowed to do, not what's existing.
Oh, okay, all right, good.
So, I understand where you're, where you're going with that, though.
Vice Chair, I think I have-
Yeah, you just had a stray reference to an R2-
Yes, we did, page three.
-zoning district on the third unnumbered page of your statement.
I apologize for it not being numbered, it's a pet peeve of mine also.
Okay.
We will correct that, it does reference R4B in the first page, that's also unnumbered, and it should be numbered, but we will correct it on the third page. And also, I did see what the Vice Chair had raised, for some reason, a CFO for Littleneck Parkway made it into our last submission to your board, that was not in our original filing, the proper CFO was for Booth Street, you should have it in your records, but we will get it back into your records the right way, I apologize.
Otherwise, if you can provide us some soundborns that predate 1989 would be great.
Predate? I don't understand this numerical formula that you have in your statement. 0.99 slash 0.9 equals 1.10? I don't know what I'm supposed to make of that.
What's trying to be, maybe we could have put it clearer here, is the 10%, we're not exceeding the 10%, and we're trying to show you that in F A R format as well.
But you're, you're not going to have an F A R of 1.1, are you?
Uh, no, the F A R is not going to be 1.1, I think they made a mistake on that.
It's got to be 0.99.
0.99.
It's just multiplied by 1.10.
Yeah, I think they could have put that clear there, I apologize, we'll clarify that for you.
Okay, were there any other questions? Any speakers on this item? All right, you can submit to us on April 15, we'll continue the hearing on April 29.
Item number 18, calendar number 31813BZ, 74 Grand Street, Manhattan, Brian Cave.
Ms. Gallant, are you setting up a PowerPoint for this?
You know, I don't think it's necessary, given the hour and given the state of the application, I think I'll just respond to the questions, I was at the review session yesterday, if, if, with your permission.
That seems fine.
That way.
It seems fine. However, it may be worthwhile, since there are cameras here, that you may want to, or we can remove those, those drawings from behind you.
Oh, the relevant drawings, yeah.
Right, since they are not really reflective of your project.
The Queen's project.
The Queen's project.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Sir Navasan and Commissioners, I am Judy Gallant from Brian Cave on behalf of TJD 21 LLC, the owner of 74 Grand Street. This is an application for variances to permit the redevelopment of 74 Grand Street, which is a 25 by 100-foot vacant lot located on the north side of Grand Street between Worcester and Green Streets. It's located in an M15B zoning district within the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. The applicant is seeking variances of two manufacturing district use regulations, 4210 and 4214D2B, to permit the construction of a six-story mixed-use building containing use group two residential use on floors two through six, and use group six retail on the ground and cellar levels. Community Board two voted unanimously in favor of the application. If you'll permit me, then I'll just go to your questions.
Sure.
Commissioner Collins asked about parking currently on the site. The owner of 74 Grand has allowed the owner of 27 Worcester Street, which is currently under construction, as well as the superintendent of that building and a few construction workers, one or two, to park their vehicles on 74 Grand as a favor from neighbor to neighbor. There is no lease in place, there's no compensation of any, any kind, but the owner of 74 Grand has already put an end to that arrangement after we heard your comments yesterday. The Chair had asked whether using the lounge space at the top of the conforming hotel plan on the sixth floor, if that were to be used as an additional hotel room instead of as a lounge, how that might affect the financial feasibility of the hotel, the conforming hotel. And by way of explanation for that decision to make that a lounge, it was determined that in a hotel of this tiny size, it's obviously a boutique hotel, because that's all that can fit on the site, you really need a level of amenity to make it special if it's going to work and get the projected room rates. Indoor space that has access to outdoor space is very valuable and considered very special, so it was determined that that space at the top would be a lounge that would open onto an outdoor space for the hotel's purpose. But even if that space were to be devoted to a hotel room, which it could be, it would be a small hotel room, not of the same size and quality of the others proposed in that, in that scenario, it would not make a difference in terms of the financial feasibility of the hotel, assuming conservatively that there would be no additional expenses in connection with that room, and of course, there would be, but just assuming-
Right.
-conservatively that there wouldn't be, the conforming hotel with the 12 rooms would still have significantly less value than the cost of development, and therefore would not be considered financially feasible. Under the 11-room scenario, the hotel's development cost exceeds its value by $9.9 million, and under the 12-room scenario, without taking into consideration the cost of adding the additional room, the development costs still exceed the value by over $9 million. So it, it's about $700,000, I think, or $500,000 of income for that additional room, it doesn't even make a dent, it's a de minimis change and doesn't change the result. There also can be no hotels, you can't increase the number of keys by putting hotel rooms on the lobby level, ground floor, because the district regulations don't permit use group five below the level of the second story, so-
And therefore, your second floor is really devoted to lobby space and-
Right. The Chair also asked about the design of the corridor and restrooms in the as-of-right office scenario, and whether an alternative design might result in additional usable office space. And again, by way of explanation for the layout proposed, each space needs two means of egress, and those exits must be remote from one another pursuant to the building code, which requires an intervening corridor between egress stairs.
So you have to put the corridor as per code?
Right. And the toilets, the decision was made that the toilet should be located in the corridor, because if the space is to be subdivided between tenants, all tenants need access to the men's and, and women's room, and the architect made the decision to put those toilets in the center of the floor, because that's the darkest and least desirable space in this long and narrow lot. But more importantly, the toilet and corridor areas are included in the rentable income that is considered for financial purposes. So even if you change the layout to a layout that you might consider more preferable, it's not going to change the economic analysis.
So the 29%, when you talk about the efficiency, is that only, that does include the corridor, that includes basically just the core and the egress? Because you've talked about 33% and 29%.
Right.
The amount devoted to the core.
Right, core.
So that's just the core, that's not the other spaces?
No.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Otley Brown asked about how Freeman Fraser arrived at the value for the outdoor space. The outdoor space was valued, it was valued at 25% of the per-square-foot value for the enclosed spaces, and there were comparables that did include outdoor space. There was a comparable that included a penthouse unit with an outdoor space, as well as another unit with a balcony. I want to note for the record, however, that there was a, there is a 120-foot, square-foot balcony associated with the mezzanine in the rear that was inadvertently omitted from the valuation. It, according to Freeman Fraser, it has no impact, it's a de minimis change, and we will resubmit the financial showing that it was an inadvertent error that was discovered when Commissioner Otley Brown raised this issue yesterday, it had not come to anyone's attention prior to that. And then the Chair raised several concerns about the proposed building not providing a 30-foot rear yard, and I'll just go through each of them briefly. There was a concern that D O B might eventually require a 30-foot rear yard pursuant to the multiple dwelling law. Multiple dwelling law, section 30, provides that every room must have a window, at least one window, that opens directly onto a street or a, quote, lawful, and that's an important word, a lawful yard, court, or space on the same zoning lot. Multiple dwelling law, section 265B, provides that, and I'm going to read this because it's, it's critical, and again, if I was a book, I would be underlining and bolding here, except as otherwise provided in the zoning resolution of the City of New York. The minimum depth of a required rear yard shall be 30 feet, for the first 125 feet, then above that, 350. above that, 35." We have consulted with DOB on this issue, and it has issued a determination, which I submitted and I hope is before you. We received that ZRD-1 determination in January, and DOB has said that whereas here there are no bulk regulations for a use in a given district, and BSA issues a use variance, and I'm quoting now, "BSA will determine the bulk parameters of the building. As such, BSA will determine the, quote, 'lawful,' and that's the word from the multiple dwelling law, the lawful areas upon which legally required windows can open in compliance with MDL Section 30." So because the definition of what is required as a rear yard under MDL 25, Section 25 says, "except as otherwise provided in zoning," your grant is as otherwise provided in zoning because you are given power through 7221 of the zoning resolution to decide what the bulk regulations for a use that has no bulk regulations would be. So your grant will determine what is the lawful yard.
All right, there are just a couple of issues on that. One, I think as a policy standpoint, the Board may want you to provide the 30-foot rear yard.
I will address that, right.
All right. The second thing is that I raise this concern because at the very minimum, the Buildings Department has been maybe somewhat uneven. We have seen, I would say, a few cases before the Board for a use change in a manufacturing district where they issued a multiple dwelling law objection, most recently on Varick Street, even though ultimately the applicants revised their design to get rid of that multiple dwelling objection. However, it was issued by the Buildings Department, and they came to us and filed a companion A case. We were very concerned because I think the Board did not support new development violating the multiple dwelling law. So that is one issue. So I understand that you have this MDL, this reconsideration, but I just want to alert you that this necessarily means they might not raise it later.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Interestingly, we sought an objection, and we were told we couldn't have one. So, and this was in January, I'm not sure when the Varick Street case was.
I think it was maybe a couple of years ago when we had that.
Uh huh, okay.
So that's one issue. But I guess the other issue is that the Board generally has required residential developments to comport with residential regulations for a series of reasons, and I just wanted to point out two things here. One is that you have a special permit in this district for new development for residential. I think the text is very clear that they want you to comply with things like density and, I don't think density is an issue over here, but the rear yard as well. So in the spirit of that, I think it makes sense to provide the 30-foot rear yard. And I guess the second issue is that we normally ask the applicants to look at a closed residential zoning district, and you've looked at a C62, and in fact, I think the zoning analysis fails to show that it meets the requirement of the rear yard. It notes, yes, that it does, but actually it doesn't. So I think there has to be a really compelling reason why you cannot provide the rear yard.
And I'd like to address that.
Yes, but I just, if you're going to address the financials with the lesser variance, just note that you do have an error on your Schedule A1. Your profit's $541,000, not $248,000. And then if you annualize that, that's $202,000.
Is that in the most recent...
That's the one that they just...
We just handed that up because...
Okay, haven't had a chance to look at it, okay.
In anticipation of this issue. It wasn't something that was submitted with the application, but we did have it done and wanted to have it ready for today.
Okay.
So I'll address each of the concerns you raised yesterday, and hopefully that will address your issues. You had asked whether the floor area that's lost by providing a 30-foot rear yard could be recaptured elsewhere in the envelope, and unfortunately, because of landmarks, it can't be. The original, landmarks limited the height of this building to 91 feet to the top of the bulkhead. It's 83 feet to the roof of the space. The original proposal to landmarks included two penthouse floors and reached a height of 100 feet to the top of the bulkhead, and landmarks was very sensitive to that and required the applicant to remove one of those two penthouses, and it remains with one. The other issue, of course, from the landmarks requirements, and it goes to the uniqueness and the hardship, et cetera, is that the floor-to-floor heights here are dictated by the requirement of landmarks that we reuse the historic facade, and because of that, it's not possible to slip in floors behind a facade that wouldn't be seen to recoup some floor area. The architect did find a way to do that in the rear on the second floor. There's a mezzanine, and that was one way to get a little bit of extra floor area. But by and large, you're limited, and you'll see, I'll address it in a moment, the plans for that 30-foot rear yard residential alternative. It only, you can only get the 4.5 FAR. You also expressed concern...
Okay, so, and the question then is whether a 4.5 FAR project would work.
Right. And Freeman Frazier has done an analysis that shows that the annual total return on investment is 0.52. I understand there's a mistake in one of the schedules, so maybe that's affected, and we'll have to relook at that, but it is not feasible. The other issue that you raised was...
Can I just identify another issue? Because I think the set of drawings you've provided us is for the 30-foot rear yard alternative. Is that what we have in front of us?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not labeled correctly.
All right. I just question little things where you've chosen to set back portions of floors where you don't need to. So it seems to me you want to maximize your floor area in this scenario. The number of, is it fair to say that the number of units doesn't change as a result of this?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So it's not, so it seems to me, at least I'm looking at this very quickly, on the mezzanine floor, why wouldn't you want to expand your bedroom to, instead of setting it back unnecessarily? So I would say that you should see whether there, maybe that's the stray case, which is the mezzanine, and the others are all just straight, but you'd want to maximize it, that's all. So there's no design reason for you to set back that mezzanine.
Yeah, I don't have an, the mezzanine, it's set back, you mean, from the rear?
It's set back in the rear. Instead of one straight line, it's, it's, yeah.
Maybe there's a reason.
Yeah.
Would you like the architect to address that?
Sure.
Paul Freitas, C3D Architecture. Because it's a mezzanine, we're dictated by the amount of area below it. So we're only allowed up to 30% of the floor area. So that basically prohibits us from having, because we're reducing the floor size, we have to also, we have to maintain that relationship between mezzanine and the floor below it. So the setback is actually a result of that requirement.
All right, but it is being counted as floor area, right? The mezzanine is counted as floor area?
Yes, it is.
I'm not sure what the 30% is and how that really affects it because couldn't this just be counted a floor? Does it have to be counted as, if you call it a floor and not a mezzanine, does that change anything else?
Well, landmarks required that we were only allowed to have six floors. So by...
But that's a technical issue, right?
Yeah, but the Building Department...
So I don't see any reason why, it doesn't seem, maybe, it doesn't seem like, it seems like a technical issue. They want to call it six stories and not seven stories, is that correct?
That's correct, as does the Building Department.
Why does the Building Department require you to do that?
When we got our determination with respect to, we had, there were some discussions about the mezzanine as well, and being that six floors was mentioned in landmarks and that we have figured out a way to kind of create an extra space and call it a mezzanine and not change the floor numbers, that was something that they were, they found important.
All right, it seems hyper-technical, and since we're talking about very little square footage, I'm going to let it go because I don't know whether that's going to change the financials one way or the other. You capture like that, I don't know, maybe 10 or 20 square feet. All right, I'll accept that explanation.
You, if I could just continue on some of the things that you had brought up yesterday. Because 74 Grand is within 100 feet of a corner, no rear yard is required, as you know, under zoning, or for the lot behind it at 40 Worcester Street, which is also within 100 feet of a corner. And as a result, the open space between the buildings is less than it would be with a building that shares a rear lot line with an interior lot that requires a rear yard on the donut. So that's just what happens at corners, just to sort of set the stage. It should really be noted that the building that formerly stood on the site before it was required to be demolished when it became unsafe due to the construction of the neighboring building, was a Class A multiple dwelling that had four joint-labor quarters for artists and a rear yard of just 15 feet. So the same condition, and the proposed actually betters that by instead having a 15-foot rear yard, it's a 20-foot rear yard. I also note, although it doesn't apply here, but it's useful as a point of reference, that multiple dwelling law, Section 277, which applies to the conversion of non-residential buildings to residential use, allows, if you have a minimum dwelling unit size of 1,200, which our building does, that building can be located just 15 feet from a building wall on the same or neighboring zoning lot. So again, this 15-feet dimension, multiple dwelling law would allow that, and that's what was there before. And also, in order to have that 15-foot minimum distance under multiple dwelling law, the building at issue has to be located not less than five feet from its own rear lot line, and obviously, we have that condition as well. In our case, it's 20, in both instances, it's 20 feet. The building would be located 20 feet from its rear lot line, and there would be a 20-foot distance between building wall and building wall, assuming that 40 is built right to its property line. Another point is that the area is really characterized by small rear yards. None of the residential buildings on the block have 30-foot rear yards. Of the 10 residential, they vary between, I think, 11 feet at the smallest or 10-foot 9 and 19-foot 1, so ours would actually have the biggest rear yard on the block. Of the 10 residential buildings on the block, only four, and there are essentially two pairs, benefit from a deeper, effective rear yard by, you know, taking advantage of space on the other side of the rear lot line. 46 Worcester backs onto 47 Green, and that does have an effective rear yard of 30 feet. And 32 Worcester backs onto 43 Green, and that has an effective rear yard of 26.9, not 30 feet, but so only one actually makes it to 30 feet. And then there are seven lots that are, quote, "corner lots," lots within 100 feet of corners on the block that contain residential buildings, and none of them have a 30-foot rear yard or even a 30-foot effective rear yard, with the exception of two lots that have partial rear yards that are 30 feet or more. 37 Green has just a, it's a wider lot, but a 15-foot portion of 37 Green has a rear yard that exceeds 30 feet in depth. And 53 Green has a smaller portion, so less than 15 feet, a small slice of a larger frontage or back lot, that also has an effective rear yard in excess of 30 feet. And that's it. And these are all residential buildings.
Right, I understand them, and all of them are also conversions of existing buildings. None of them, I believe, are new, and we do recognize that the law of text does give certain flexibility to existing non-residential buildings to be converted. So I recognize that. I think, I'll tell you the reasons why I have concerns about this, even if you put aside the policy aspect of it. One is that the adjacent building to, I guess it's, I think it's 40?
40.
Worcester is fully built out, so you're blocked. Vacant lots of the corner, I think, can be built without any rear yard, if I'm not mistaken. And so, and the adjacent building on the other side has something which is 5 feet 4. So you have, you, this can create a real canyon for you, and while right now it looks bright and open, at some point, it may be closed. And on top of that, I think you've chosen to provide these balconies, which are 10, 5 or 10 feet, that further cut off light and air. So...
I'll address the balconies. The balconies, which are shown on the plan as lattice, they're not solid structures. They would allow light and air to pass through them. I think that landmarks particularly liked and encouraged those balconies as a nod to the historic fire escapes that were on the building, and the materials would be something to reflect that as well. So it's a grating, some mesh-like or grating-like thing, which wouldn't be so solid in the rear yard. And they're just four feet wide. I think yesterday someone said 10.
I said 10.
They're just four feet.
Okay.
So they're not that imposing, and the nature of the material would minimize or mitigate to some extent their presence in the rear yard. And then the final thing that I would add, again, going back to the financial feasibility study, is that unfortunately, reducing, you know, increasing the rear yard, given the strictures of landmarks in terms of the reuse of the facade and the limit on the height, it's not a financially feasible project. And we will, of course, check the mistakes that have been pointed out and see how that affects things, but given that the annualized return on total investment was 0.52, I don't know that that error will make enough difference to make it a feasible project.
Okay.
And I think that was all...
I think that covers the host of issues we raised. Are there any questions for the applicant?
No.
All right, any speakers on this item? Any speakers? All right, Ms. Gallant, I think it would be helpful if you revised this based on what was pointed out, and we can take a look at it, and we'll continue the hearing. And I just want to make sure that a 30-foot rear yard proposal is not feasible, so.
Okay.
Okay, so how much time do you need?
I think that, in terms of, I guess all we need to resubmit then is the financials, then we can take a look at the plans to see if there's any way to pick up some floor area. I think we can submit in a week.
Okay.
Yeah, the first, the first, yeah.
First, okay.
That is a week, yeah.
So if you can submit on April 1st, we can have the hearing on April 8th.
Item number 19133414GC, 49883BZ, 2131 Highland Boulevard, Staten Island.
Good afternoon, Philip Rampoula. I attended the review session yesterday, and if I can get right to it?
Yes, you can. Get right to it.
We will show the dumpster area on the, on the site plan. I believe Commissioner Hankston said there was a proposed third floor. I think you were talking about Sheet 12 of 14 where it just says "proposed." It should say "proposed conditions."
Proposed conditions, but also I think the note just is sort of floating in the middle of the entire building as opposed to where the third floor actually is.
I don't think I got the right sheet then. I didn't follow that.
I think it just needs an arrow to where the...
Was that, what, do you know what sheet that was?
I thought it was...
Proposed conditions?
14, unproposed conditions, yeah.
I'll take care of it.
It says "existing three stories," and it's just floating there. So it gives the impression that the entire building is three stories as opposed to just that portion of which is three stories.
Not a problem. The bigger discussion had to do with the planting and the ability to show compliance with the new parking regulations for planting on adjoining property lines. What we did do, because it was tight to get parking in here, is along the north property line, we only need a four-foot planting strip. We're actually showing 5.5, which is a little bit more, and it skews out, if you could look at the lot line, the lot line actually skews out, so it's actually larger in the back corner. And in accordance with the new parking regulations, we can have a parking space that's 16 feet long with two feet overhanging into the planting area. So we're showing that on that line in the back. What we're not doing is up against the west property line, there is the existing wall of the old Duane Reade that was right along the property line. We're not showing any planting on that west wall. And the reason we're not doing that, it was our inability to get additional parking spaces within the parking lot. So we didn't see a reason for it. Along Bedford Avenue, we're meeting the intent as best we could. It should be a seven-foot planting strip along Bedford Avenue. It's actually 3 foot 4 to the widening line, but between 7 foot 10 and 7 foot 9 to the property line. So that area is just going to be...
Okay, so you basically meet the requirement.
We do.
Right? It's, the point you're making is that it's within the bed of the map street, correct?
Correct.
I think you noted that that doesn't necessarily require GCL because it's not considered permanent, something like that.
Exactly.
Okay. So the only area where they're not really complying, it seems, is along the western, not along the western side.
Right, well, that's adjacent to a commercial property. My main concern was to the north, actually.
Right, but they say they comply.
Well, with a two-foot overhang, that's really reduced to like three foot.
Well, it's permitted. It's permitted in the zoning under, under the new parking regulation. I can squeeze down my 25-foot aisle width by another foot.
Isn't the minimum required 22?
Yeah, we don't subscribe to 22, though, because we don't believe 22 really does it. We like to go a minimum of 23. So we thought 25 would be comfortable because we just, we just split the aisle width in this circular configuration coming in and out of the parking lot.
And on the, on the rear, on the north wall, what type of fence are you going to have there? have there?
That would be an opaque fence. We've met the owners, the operators have met with the owners a couple of different times. She was just looking for a fence that had slats in it, meaning opaque. And when I met her at the community board meeting and told her we'd be willing to do planting along that wall with six-foot-high arbivides, she was very satisfied, so.
So it's going to be a chain-link fence with slats and then armor?
Planting, yes.
Would you prefer to get a little more landscaping? Is that a problem for you?
No.
Even if you bring it down to twenty-four or twenty-three, like you said?
I can do that.
And then on the east side, you're keeping that fence, that wall, that curved masonry wall?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm going to increase the planting island along the north property line, and I'll even show the arbivide at every four foot on center.
Okay.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions?
Your statement should just comment on your compliance with signage.
Yes.
That you do. Either that or on the...
I'm sorry, what was that, last year?
You make the document compliance on the plant.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Since I showed the signage, the actual signage on the plant.
And there's only going to be signage on the Highland Boulevard frontage, correct?
I think we are showing one on the Bedford side.
But nothing in the rear?
No, nothing in the rear.
Right. No signage in residential portions, but limited.
Correct.
Bedford, closer to the corner?
Closest to the corner, which is opposite an existing service station within the C-eight district.
Okay. All right. Any speakers on this item? Any speakers? Well, I think we can close the hearing, and we leave the record for you to make changes. How much time do you need?
I could submit by April first.
Okay, April first. All right. We can fill this out on April eighth.
Thank you very much.
Motion to close.
Chair Srinivasan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hankson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
This concludes the public hearing from March twenty-fifth.
Thank you.